How do I do? I am live. I was gonna ask how you turn the mics on here. I just found out. Are all the mics live or is there a? Okay, so notes to board members.
Yeah, no side conversations.
No side conversations, correct? You're in front of a live mic at all times. I'll call the meeting in order. Thank you, President Pemberton and everyone here at LC State for hosting the October State Board meeting. It's always a delight for us to be able to come out and see the great work you all do in person. And we appreciate the hospitality. And this might be one of the fullest rooms I've seen at a State Board meeting. So thank you all who are participating here over the next two days. Before we get going on the formal agenda, I want to take a moment to welcome our newest member to the Idaho State Board of Education, Pete Kohler. Pete, welcome. Pete joins us following his appointment by Governor Brad Little, and we're really pleased to have him onboard. He's stepping into a seat previously held by Dr. Linda Clark. And I want to take a moment to once again thank Dr. Clark for her many years of dedicated service. Her leadership and steady hand have left a lasting mark on the board and on the education system across Idaho. And Pete, all says you have some big shoes to fill.
Well, if Linda would appreciate that.
When Linda retired, I think one of the things I said is if there were a Mount Rushmore for people who have had an impact on Idaho education as a whole, it would have been Dr. Clark.
I agree.
She's done a terrific job. And I know she was a peer of you when you were superintendent, so you've known her for a long time. But it's a delight to have you onboard. Pete brings an incredible depth of experience and a lifelong commitment to service that will serve this board well. Pete's a Parma native, 21-year Army veteran who retired as a lieutenant colonel and someone who has dedicated much of his career to public education. That combination of leadership, perspective, and heart for students is exactly what we value on this board. You, Pete, understand how education connects to opportunity and to the strength of our communities. And your continued involvement speaks volumes about your commitment to giving back. So on behalf of all of us, welcome. We're grateful for your willingness to serve and excited to have your insight on this board. And as a further note, I got to know Pete back in 2019 when Board Member Gilbert and Superintendent Critchfield actually were leading a subcommittee on improving higher ed, just when the governor came into office. And Pete was part of that committee. And so I guess there's good news and bad news, Pete. The good news is that many of the priorities that we identified during that subcommittee led by Bill and Debbie, like focus on early literacy, refining funding, collapsing light items, all those priorities or many of them, we're still working on, which is both the good news and bad news. But I know you're gonna hit the ground running, and we look forward to your contributions.
Thank you very much.
Just one other note, we're missing in person one board member. Superintendent Critchfield was unable to make the meeting here in Lewiston. Oh, where's Cindy? Oh, hey Cindy. No one told me you were online today. I was looking around. Yeah, it's good to see. Are you in Mud Lake?
No, I'm actually up at the Elker Ranch in Fremont County.
Okay, we're gonna need to turn Cindy's, we're gonna need to turn your volume up. Can we, they've got that. All right, well, good to see you Cindy. So Cindy's online. And Superintendent Critchfield had a commitment this evening that she had to be at, so she wasn't able to travel in person. But she also is gonna be joining us remotely. She is on the agenda later this afternoon, so hopefully she's able to join us before she's on the agenda. So with that as an introduction, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Gilbert to walk us through the administrative side of the agenda.
First of all, action number one, I move to approve the agenda as posted.
A motion and a second by Sean. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
I move to approve the minutes for the August 20, 2025 regular board meeting.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Callie. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
I move to set October 14, 15, 2026 as the date, and Lewis-Clark State College is the location for the October 2026 regular board meeting. And I move to eliminate the February 2026 regular board meeting. And I move to change the location of the June 16 to 18, 2026 regular board meeting from Idaho State University to Boise State University. And I move to change the date and location of the August 19, 2026 virtual board meeting to August 12 and 13, 2026 at Idaho State University.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Callie. Any discussion of the motion? Jen, did you want to comment at all on kind of the structural changes that represented here?
Yes, so we've been working with the institutions and our Office of the State Board of Education to be thoughtful to how we're using university resources and the timing of those meetings and trying to be thoughtful about the investments that our institutions are making and the timing of those are held. We will continue to engage with the universities around the timing of these meetings. But for now, we are moving forward with an effort to streamline our meetings, control some costs attached to them, and put the institutions in a better position to use their funds strategically. We will be eliminating the February board meeting, but as urgent issues come up, we will have a procedure for addressing any issues that may need special attention by the board. But otherwise, I call upon the institutions to plan for bringing priority items to the board for the December and April board meetings with the elimination of that February meeting.
Great, thank you Jen. We have a motion and a second by Callie. Any other comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Bill?
Okay, we will move to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Callie. Any discussion of the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I would now like to invite Dr. Pemberton to join us. And again, thank you for hosting us, and we look forward to your annual report of all the great things that are happening on this campus.
Wonderful, grateful. Well, for the record, I'm Cynthia Pemberton. And it is my great pleasure to serve as president at Lewis-Clark State College. Before we begin, I want to say thank you, thank you to the board and to the Office of the State Board for being here, for helping to make this possible. I'd like to introduce my leadership team that's here with me today. This is pretty exciting for me because I have a full leadership team. And it's been a while, as some of you know, since that happened. So as I introduce the vice presidents, I ask that they please stand. Our senior vice president and vice president for Student Affairs, Dr. Andy Hansen. Our provost and academic vice president, Dr. Fred Chilson. Our vice president for Institutional Research and Effectiveness, Dr. Grace Anderson. And our vice president for Finance and Administration, Mr. Chris Jones. I'm happy to have them all with me here today. I also want to say thank you to Kyle Schwartz, my executive assistant, for his help, and Vicky Cooper, who serves as a management assistant in the Office of the Provost. That dynamic duo are largely responsible for the leadership of the operationalization of this meeting. Thank you also to our staff, faculty, and students joining me today. Our IT department, communications, physical plant, Sodexo. It literally takes an army of us to be able to bring this event to life, and we're very proud to be able to host you. So to begin, I want to start off with just a little bit of a sort of elevator speech idea of LC State, especially because we have some new folks with us. First of all, we have been serving Idaho since 1893. We are 132 years old. We are accessible. We are Idaho's most affordable four-year institution. And as I'll share with you today, we are also accomplished. Experiential learning has been and remains a hallmark of an LC State education since long before I was president. We say we connect learning to life. And in fact, as some of you know, I'm a very literal person. And so early on in my tenure at LC, I said, well, okay, if I'm gonna say we do that, do we? And so we validated it. And 100% of the programs at LC State have an experiential component, whether that is an internship, practica, a research project, a service learning project, something that allows the student to apply their learning in the real world. We are Idaho's one and only small school, small college, we hope soon, small university experience. And we're very proud to play that role and to hold that space. Our mission is very concrete. It is very direct, and it is authentically lived in all of our education programs. We say our job is to help students become engaged citizens, to be successful leaders, and to be lifelong learners. And we try to make sure that that is happening whether they're pursuing a certificate, a two-year or a four-year degree program. Whatever academic or career technical vehicle they're using, these are the outcomes, the mission-driven outcomes that we're pursuing. Our students, they come from Idaho, and they are predominantly regional, meaning that they come from within about 100, 150-mile radius of the campus. That will be important information for you to be aware of as I go through the presentation. We have a couple hundred native students, about 140 veteran students. Our students still are overwhelmingly first generation, first person in their family to attend and hopefully complete college. They're also Pell-awards. That means they have high financial need. When we survey our students annually, the majority of them report that they are working while going to school, many full-time. And when they graduate, they report that they are working in Idaho. Each year, I establish presidential priorities. These priorities, it's important that they be aligned with our own strategic plan as well as the State Board's strategic plan. Our first priority this year has to do with our name change effort to become Lewis-Clark State University. And I'll talk more about that journey in this presentation. Our second priority remains focused on enrollment. And we're really talking now not just about recruiting students in. Inputs are important, but also the throughputs and the outputs. And so I'll be sharing some of that with you today. And automating and integrating AI, not only into our business and operational processes, but throughout our academic programs. It's here. AI is here. It's part of our life. Whether we like it, don't like it, however we feel about it, it is our new reality. So the journey, this nice blank slide. To begin this conversation about LC State's desire to move forward with a name change initiative, it's important to understand that LC was one of two designated normal schools which have their roots in the 19th century and associated with teacher education. The other one in Idaho is Albion College, which has been defunct for a number of years now. Partially because of those historically embedded roots, every time we want to do something, we have to get the state law changed to actually do it. So State Board approval is an important piece, but we always have to go further than that. In 2020, as some of you may recall, Idaho Code was amended through House Bill 395, which is what allowed LC State to begin to offer graduate courses, graduate programs. And as you know, we have a master's in nursing leadership. We have a master's in cyber accountancy. And this spring, we'll begin enrolling students in our direct entry Masters of Nursing program. Niche-specific graduate education. We are a teaching institution, historically and moving forward. We are not a research institution. We're very clear about who we are and what we're about and the role that we play. But there are some very specific niche-appropriated programs that make sense for us to be able to offer. From that start in 2020, all that we all know, we had the pandemic. That's like this big intermission in everybody's lives. It's sort of like if you're a Star Trek person, it's like we kind of folded time, and now we're on the other side of it. You're laughing. You get what I'm saying. So things stalled out for a while. But then between 2023 and 2025, we engaged campus conversations and community conversations. We conducted focus groups. We conducted surveys, really exploring the idea, is this something that folks wanted us to do and wasn't meaningful? A variety of aspects of rationale came forward. And the most compelling one, the most direct and simple way to understand some of the driving force behind this change. In Idaho, we do not say North Idaho Community College. We do not have the title of the Community College of Western Idaho, the Community College of Southern Idaho. We just say college. Which means that in Idaho, and as I said, the majority of our students come from Idaho, we are constantly confronting the clarification that we are indeed a four-year institution. We're a small institution, that won't change. We're teaching-focused, that won't change. But we are a four-year institution that also offers some select graduate degrees. And in athletics and in admissions, it interferes with our ability to recruit students and clarify to them who they are. There's a variety of rationale pieces associated with this that are shared through our FAQ page. But that was probably the simplest, most direct explanation that was shared with me early on. I'm like, okay, I get that. That makes sense. So we generally, over a course of about two years, have gained campus and community consensus. I use that word consensus because to say that we have 100% of the people all excited, that would not be true. To say that we have general consensus and support, that is true. Then we moved the proposal through the Policy Committee of the State Board and gained approval in March of 2025. State Board, as you know, this board approved it unanimously in April of 2025. Then we entered the L's process. It's the Executive Agency Legislative System. And it's the official process and portal through which statute proposals are routed. So it was submitted as an idea this summer, early summer, and then approved to move forward. I engaged conversations throughout the summer with legislative sponsors. We need to have a Senate and a House legislative sponsor. Then it was proposed in August to the actual bill language, which we had to scan all the Idaho statute language to find every place that Lewis-Clark State College was mentioned. And all of those changes have to be part of the proposal. The proposal was accepted through that system. The bill is approved now as of September 12 to move into the legislative session, which is where we will be in January. The idea is hopefully that we will gain Senate approval. The bill will start in the Senate, in the Senate Education Committee. And then we'll hopefully have house approval. Ultimately, the governor would sign it. Then, still not over then, then the regional accrediting organization, the Northwest Commission, has to review and approve. And then ideally, we have rollout. And our goal is that that rollout will occur mid to late spring because we want to time it along with our newly-launched LC State Homecoming Celebration, which will focus on baseball in the spring. That's been our priority. That is an ongoing priority. You can see the steps that we have to work through. We're making progress and taking it one step at a time. Enrollment. This is a pretty exciting slide for us. And what I want to share with you, census, the official census date is today, October 15. So census will actually close at 9:00 PM tonight. So what you have right now is our enrollment numbers as of Monday of this week. So pre-census numbers. But what you see is that right now, our head count is projected to be over 4,000, 4,040. That is a 4.1% increase, and our FTE increase is 4.5%. Over the course of the last five years, it's been almost a 9% increase. These will be important for us to be able to share. So I'm gonna click into another aspect of this slide in a moment. These are amazing gains. In fact, this is historic. The last closest time to this enrollment for LC State was 2011, with I believe about 3,998 or 99, somewhere in there. So we are now past the 4,000 head count mark. About a third of our students are dual-credit. That's not uncommon for small regional institutions. Our first-time enrollment is up 8%. Our degree-seeking enrollment is up 3%. Those are also important numbers. Our professional studies, where we have our nursing education program, is up 9%. Those are all really important gains. Our CTE programs, which last year reported double-digit increases, are up 5.5%. And these things didn't happen just by accident. In 2018, we began laying the foundation for stabilizing enrollment across the campus community. And we did it first and foremost with an initiative we called All Hands In, which really meant transforming the culture of the institution so that everybody began to realize that every single person, from the custodian to the grounds person, to the English faculty, to the admissions recruiters, to me, we all have a role to play and own a part of the enrollment process. We pretty much have realized that cultural transformation. We also engaged co-enrollment, co-admission arrangements and agreements, articulations with our two-year sisters. We created a Warrior One-Stop, which allowed us to centralize all of our enrollment-related services in one location, from admissions to registrar, to financial aid, to student accounts, to academic advising. And we made historic investments in our marketing and promotions budget and production. Now, I'm gonna pause here for a minute too, because when I say historic investments, some of you may recall, when I came, our marketing and communications budget was $128,000 a year. Those of you in business and industry know, what is that, an ad? Just a single one? Well, for us, historic means I've been able to double that, which is a big deal, but still a far cry from some of the resources that other institutions may have to share news, information about who we are and what we're doing. Then, beginning about 2021, we began to refocus, building upon that foundation with some strategic initiatives. We launched our Rural School Initiative, which basically meant we were focusing on the small schools in small communities and targeting students in those areas. At that point, we launched the Second Chance Pell Experimental Program and became one of two institutions in the state of Idaho that were allowed to participate in that program. And we revitalized our Adult Learning Portfolio Program to try to make sure that we had an access point for adult learners that would allow them to gain academic credit associated with their life experience and their professional experiences. And moving into 2024, those initiatives have been maturing. We transitioned to a prison education program. And I'll talk a little bit more later in this presentation about what that meant and what that took. We have launched our Adult Learning Industry BAS, which allows individuals with three years of work experience in specific business and industry areas to parlay that into a customized bachelor's degree program that allows them to utilize those experiences, those credits, and then build upon them. We leveraged the launch funds to positively impact CTE enrollment in particular. We've also been leveraging technology, implementing things like Element 451, an admissions tool, redesigning our website, and then DegreeSite, which helps transfer students know in advance what kind of credits they have and how they align with the degree pursuit at LC State. And as you know, built capacity in career technical, workforce training, and then in niche graduate programs. Now, all of that got us to those numbers. Now, these are some other numbers, other slopes of lines to take a look at. LC State's unduplicated head count, as I said, is up 8.9% in five years. Over that same time period, over that same time period, Idaho's population growth has been 5.1%. In Nesbitt County, the regional stronghold of students that attend LC State, 0.8% over the same time period. And Nesbitt County college age, traditional college age, 18- to 24-year-olds, nearly flat, at 0.2% increase. The same can be said across most rural counties in north-central Idaho. Across the country, small schools like LC State located in regional areas with flat population growth, which is what we are experiencing, have been in enrollment freefall. And yet at LC State, that isn't our reality. That isn't what's been happening here. We have been defying the odds and punching well above our weight. And it's because of the work that we have done, laying a foundation strategically, engaging initiatives specific to our strengths, and then helping those initiatives move forward. But it's not all just about enrollment. It's also about retaining and persisting. And likewise, we began laying the foundation for that in 2018 as well. We adopted an academic coaching model that included peer mentorships, faculty mentorships, even alumni connections. We implemented an at-risk early alert system for our students. We purchased software associated with what's called Handshake, which is really an internship career services tool. Think Facebook and a dating app for college students to connect with potential employers and/or internship sites. At this point, as of this fall, 72% of the students attending LC State right now have active profiles in Handshake. We took our one-stop model and expanded it to a student success center in the library, where we co-located counseling services associated with tutoring, writing labs, and our food pantry. And at first, I thought that was a weird thing, about the food pantry with the tutoring in the library. Are you sure? And they said, yeah, we are sure. And they were right, because it's very hard for a student to be able to focus on what they're doing in the classroom when they're hungry. And our food pantry does a flourishing business of trying to make sure that students' deeds are met. Likewise, in terms of strategic initiatives, we purposely Likewise, in terms of strategic initiatives, we purposely have been working to enhance student engagement. Now, one of the things that I'll share when it comes to student engagement, since I have been here, by renovating and repurposing existing facilities, we have increased our residential housing capacity by 10%. That's pretty good when you're not building a new facility. And even so, we have 20 students right now for the third consecutive year in housing in the seaport wing of the Hell's Canyon Grand Hotel, because we don't have enough space for them on campus. And if we didn't have housing for them, they wouldn't be able to come. So we have put a lot of effort and energy into trying to enhance the campus community environment, build up the energy and excitement in that environment. We have a Do More app so students can stay dialed in and tuned in to exactly what's going on where. Expanded our counseling services to include face-to-face and online, and basically made sure the counseling services were available 24/7 for student needs. We've also been working to build cohorts and community, not only the housing that I talked about, but basically living, learning communities and themed cohorts to try to help students feel connected with their academic disciplines, the work they're doing, the students that they're pursuing it with, and therefore positively impact retention and persistence. We also have adopted campus community calendaring. Now, that might seem like a simple thing, but it's actually not that easy to accomplish. It's not. It's not that easy to accomplish. And we've identified things, we call them signature events, where we ask the folks, please attend and don't schedule anything that conflicts with it. So again, we try to create these focal points for campus and community connection. In addition to throughputs, what inputs and throughputs have an impact. This might be my favorite slide coming up. Now, for a number of years, you've heard LC State talk about EWA. EWA is the Enrollment Workload Adjustment Weighted Credit Hour formula that has mathematically disadvantaged this institution for decades. Recall that I said enrollments up. I also said full-time students are up and professional programs. That means our weighted credit hour production has been going up. When you see the numbers that have parentheses, those are all the years that we have experienced losses to base associated with that formula. This year, here's what would have happened to LC State. That's over 3% of our appropriated budget. And this is the year that you're saying we're not going to do EWA? Now you're saying it? I don't, laugh, but be me. That's not just bad timing. It's an incredible disappointment, because we did it. We did it. Graduation outputs and outcomes. Now, what I want you to notice on this slide, the numbers are kind of mediocre overall. Very much true. And here's how that percentage is calculated. It's first-time, full-time students who start college in the summer or fall. That represents, in the graph that you see here, the most recent one, 13% of our total headcount. Not particularly representative of the student body that we are serving. The calculation disincentivizes transfer students, because you don't get any credit for those. It disincentivizes the two-year, four-year partnerships, and it does not adequately reflect the accomplishments associated with the student body that LC State is serving. Approximately 40% of our current enrollment as of Monday's enrollment review is part-time. They're not part of this. These are dual credit. Even so, even so, we are relentless, because we've been laying the foundation to try to grow this number, and more importantly than just the number, serve our students. We've taken the connecting learning to life aspect into our career fair. And some of you who receive our Monday message know that we just had the career fair last year. I believe this is only our second time doing it, second or third time doing the career fair. We had over 600 students, more than 500 LC students, and we opened it up to high school students, regional high school students to be able to come. We had 63 different organizations present and 27 students received job offers then and there. Very excited about that outcome. We've also been building micro credentials, stackables, certificates. And a good outcome of the pandemic is that the combination of face-to-face, online, and hybrid teaching and learning modalities has become normal. That's our mode of operation. That helps us meet the needs of non-traditional students. We've streamlined course curricula, creating laddered stop-out points, and not the most favorite initiative of some of our folks, but we've adopted what's called zero-based scheduling. It's not easy to do. You need to be paying attention not to just offering the same class, the same day of the week, at the same time, but what are the courses that our students need and when do they need them? Anything from 7:00 AM till 10:00 at night, Monday through Saturday, is an open opportunity to offer a class. So we are moving forward with zero-based scheduling in an effort to do even better at meeting the needs of the complex lives that our students are living. Perhaps more important than the outcome percentage to us is the deliverable in terms of the graduate's ability to perform. This slide shows you, we looked at some of the areas where national licensure is required to be able to practice, everything from social work to radiography to nursing. And you can see LC is the blue and the national averages are the red. We don't miss. LC students excel. Teacher education, the practice exam, we're at state levels. And not, I wouldn't want to leave out our training areas, the career technical. The blue has to do with where our LC students perform on various exams for licensures associated with electrical apprenticeship, plumbing, and HVAC, far above requirements and state averages. Our students not only thrive, but they excel, as do our programs. It wouldn't be complete for me to have a presentation that didn't give you a bit of an update on our prison education program. As I mentioned earlier on, we started as a Second Chance Pell Experimental Program, recognized by the U.S. Department of Education. 2024, we made the complete transition to become a fully-recognized prison education program. That means that incarcerated individuals who are taking classes from LC State could qualify to get Pell Grants, which helps them pay for their education. At this time, we remain Idaho's one and only institution that has completed all aspects of the U.S. Department of Education guidelines and requirements to be a prison education program. Very excited about that accomplishment. And as some of you may recall from last year, doing that was no small feat. We literally stood up a college within a college. Not only is the teaching and learning environment unique and different, but so are admissions and financial aid and student accounts and library services and e-learning services. Right on down the line, across every aspect of operationalizing student enrollment, everything had to be rethought, revisioned, and created specific to that environment. And we did it. In Orifino, right now, we have 106 students, and so far, we've had 15 associate graduates. We're now in Boise with 64 students and two graduates. And we're also delivering education in Pocatello. We do have plans to continue to expand. The government shutdown with the U.S. Department of Education cut on hold is holding up some of our ability to get approval for additional sites. But we have made terrific gains, and we are very proud of the inter-agency partnership that this initiative represents and the ways that it is serving best outcomes for our state across, frankly, a constituent of individuals and students that aren't often served and serve well. We're very proud to be in this space. And this, a little bit later this afternoon, you're going to get to hear from one of our students who is part of our student panel. I hope you'll take advantage of the opportunity to ask him some questions. In addition to program success, we've had fundraising success. Now, the magnitude of this, as I was discussing during our lunch today, is a whole lot different than our sister institutions. When I came to LC State, the total assets of the LC State Foundation were right at about 10 million. And that was a benchmark that was pretty doggone exciting in terms of an accomplishment. Now, reported over 21 million, so we doubled it. That's good. It's not, it's not 100 million, it's not 400 million. That's not part of our world, not yet anyway. But it is a major accomplishment. And importantly, as this slide represents, one of the things that we did is that we have launched what we call Warrior Giving Day. Now, that isn't something that LC did historically, so we've only done it a couple times. And we're really proud of the fact that over 509 donors participated, that we had 30 out of 50 states represented, and three international individuals. It's not always just about the amount, but about the range and scope and the breadth of engagement. And we have made some exciting strides in that area. And I want to point out, when we think about that, in our advancement office, our college advancement office, we have one director. And we have one associate director who's also in charge of alumni engagement. And we just this year added an operations manager position. We're very excited about that. And it matters. Now, another piece of the puzzle that I think it's important for the board to be aware of when it comes to fundraising, our foundation president will be part of the faculty-staff panel, and I hope you'll be able to interact with him a bit later this morning. But as some of you may recall, in the summer of 2024, OSBE put out a call asking for project proposals that would allow usage of what were really, in essence, leftover COVID monies. There were funds associated with what's called emergency-assistant non-public schools that have been directed through the Office of the State Board of Education. All eight institutions put forward project proposals. The project proposals had to build capacity, they had to be associated in some way with something that would be in-demand, high-demand, and in some ways perhaps linked to appropriateness of the funds that were being proposed for usage. LC State put forward $3.2 billion with their projects, and they were supported and approved. And we were excited. The idea with those funds is it's a two-to-one match. LC raises a dollar, and then these funds would supply two dollars. Now, as some of you know, when you know me, would it be likely that I would have delayed the start of those projects? Not so much, right? We were out of the gate, and we were out of the gate fast, getting these projects initiated so we could meet the timeline. And then in April 2025, the U.S. Department of Education rescinded the funds. OSBE notified the schools that they weren't available. And then we were notified that we could scale back projects or stop them. Horses out of the barn, down the track. Hammers are flying. Walls are coming down. We already have, our workforce training is completely relocated. Sam Glenn, that weird round building, that's an area where a lot of renovations are going on so that we can build out our healthcare, allied healthcare programming. We were already down the road, so we are doing them. The projects are all moving forward. And now, instead of needing to raise a million dollars, we're looking at raising $3.2 million. Feel free to donate. Happy to receive your support at any time. And now, speaking of healthcare, I want to take you on a little bit of a journey. Sometimes I'm asked, why are you so animated and invested in talking about healthcare education at LC State? So I thought, what better way to share that than to take you on the journey? LC State launched its first nursing program in 1965, and there were 27 students that graduated from that two-year program. 1979, nursing expanded to the bachelor's level, and there were about, first, we were, there were, okay, I do not know the number on this one. Sorry, I can't read my own writing. I need my glasses. We'll move on. 2002, we began offering radiographic sciences, and that program was launched. And it was launched with 12 students in the initial cohort. 2009, the state-of-the-art Sacagawea Hall was completed. That building houses nursing, radiographic science, biology, chemistry labs, and as some of you toured last year during this meeting, our healthcare immersive learning lab, which features two atommage tables and a virtual learning stations to simulate everything from clinical rooms to office appointments with healthcare professionals. In 2010, the LPN to BSN track was added. LC State has four different nursing tracks. This is the second one that was added. In 2017, we added a bachelor's program in radiography. The program expanded at that point from 12 to 44 students. 2018, I come into the scene at this point in time. And in 2018, our Community College to BSN track was launched, which allowed us to add another 40 or so graduates annually, to be able to have students go from two-year to our four-year degrees. And we have that partnership with all of our two-year sisters. 2020, we began expanding nursing. Some of you may recall, we got additional funding support through the legislature. We were able to expand nursing faculty, nursing salaries, and we also received some funds that allowed us to expand our simulation lab capacity. So we added capacity there. We're up to about 240 at that point in time. 2023, we really focused on synergies between career technical and workforce training. And then in 2024, as you know, we gained approval and were able to launch our Masters in Nursing Leadership Program. We also have a Health Studies Partnership Program. 2025, we've begun in earnest our partnership work with Idaho State University. Everything from parametric to public health to athletic training, we do also have a partnership pathway in athletic training with the University of Idaho. Moving into 2026, you will see an array of new programs, one being our Direct Entry Masters in Nursing Program, as well as Physical Therapy Assistant Associates Programs, Health Studies, Sinography, Momography, Breast Sinography. 2027, new programs associated in allied health fields like medical lab technician, occupational therapy assistant, physical therapy assistant programs, respiratory therapy assistant, and the PA Partnership Program that we have with Idaho State University. 2028, we plan to be expanding on into areas of surgical technology. One of my asks, as you know, the board supported this capital project ask, is an expansion capacity on Sacagawea Hall to create a surg tech center that would serve everything from certificates all the way up through graduate programming. The workforce impact started with 27. The workforce impact is estimated at over 1,200 annually, when these programs are all online and functional. And those numbers are reasonably, relatively easy for us to predict, because these are cohort programs with very specific student-teacher ratios and program capacity limits. So these are not pie-in-the-sky numbers. These are capacity numbers in terms of what we will be able to generate as we move into our future. LC State has for decades built on expanding capacity and output. We have established infrastructure. We have leveraged and continue to leverage our state-of-the-art facilities and our expertise, and our graduates consistently demonstrate excellence. This is our legacy. This is our niche. We are a leader in this arena. As I close, I was actually asked this, we did a mic check earlier in this week, where we have folks from the panel come and say, you know, talk into the mic, see how it goes, how do you feel? And one of the questions I was asked, they said, well, what's one of the takeaways? What do you want as a takeaway from this? And I said, what I think I want most importantly as a takeaway is to have a very clear and universal understanding and valuing of the education niche that we excel in and the vital role that we play in and for Idaho's higher education landscape. We serve our students, we serve our communities, and we serve our state. So with that, I want to thank and commend the LC State campus community. I'm excited for you to hear from our faculty, staff, students. I'm excited for you to hear from our faculty, staff, students. I'm excited for you to hear from our foundation board president. I'm incredibly appreciative of the resilience and the incredible work ethic that is evidenced daily by the individuals that make up this campus community. And in particular, I am humbled and moved every single day by their commitment to our education mission and our students. So with that, I thank you for your support and your attention. I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, President Pemberton. I think we have a few minutes for questions, if the board has any.
Well, you mentioned some of the partnerships, and I really commend LC for the work you do in that area. I know that you also do a lot of work around making sure they're not duplicative, that you're also working with our community colleges, and I wondered if you could mention some of those partnerships as well.
Thank you. Board Member Roach, happy to do so. We have partnership programs with all of our two-year sisters. We have co-admission, co-enrollment. Now, what's special about that is that a student can be in, at, in Eastern Idaho at CEI. They can actually have a student body card that is branded with their image at LC as well as CEI, and they can be pursuing their courses of study at CEI while also taking classes at LC. So number one, it's more than partnerships, or in addition to partnerships, it is a seamless, real-time, all-the-time course pathway articulation with all of our two-year sisters. Then, of course, in healthcare education, we have partnerships, teacher education, we have partnerships. And we also, beyond the two-year schools, we, and our partnerships with ISU, our healthcare partner largely, we also have partnerships, for example, with U of I. We have engineering partnerships. Students can complete their two-year degree program with us, their associates, and if they're qualified, move into a four-year program with U of I. They can do justice studies and pre-law here and move into the program at U of I. We, we're very clear about being who we are and what we are. And we hold on tight and are incredibly proud of what we're good at. My grandmother used to say to me, she said, "Honey, it's not bragging when it's true." And I am not shy about bragging about what we're good at. But we also are incredibly astute at knowing, "Hey, this isn't our deal, but I have a sister down the road, and that's their deal. So let me go partner with them so that we bring the best opportunities to our students." A little bit of a general answer, Board Member Roach, but hopefully addresses your question. Thank you.
President Pemberton, you mentioned during your remarks that you're at capacity from a residential housing standpoint. So how, how are you thinking? And, and in the past, when you've addressed us, you've talked about there is a sweet spot for enrollment with the institution. So how are you thinking about that going forward?
Thank you, Board Member Leibik. Our sweet spot enrollment is a non-dual credit number, and we're looking at 3,000, 3,300, so we're, we still got a little bit of space to go. We are increasingly finding, though, that residential housing is important and necessary. Now, I'm a realist. Number one, we know that there's an enrollment cliff. We also know that Idaho isn't feeling it that much, and we certainly aren't experiencing it. And as you can see from the initiatives that we have launched and that are maturing, that we're putting effort and energy into, we are not being passive or idle about making sure enrollment is stable and incrementally strategically moves toward our goals. That said, the amount of time and money that it might take for us to build a dorm, I need $3.2 million first, so I could get these allied health programs taken care of, but it would be a long, a long road. So what we're doing is renovating and repurposing existing facilities. We added the Living Learning Center, which basically was an old church the institution had had, and we had our music faculty and programs in it. We moved them out, moved them to the center of campus, repurposed it. It's now a living learning community with a sleeping porch that could house 15 to 20 students. We have another facility that will house another 12 to, 12-ish probably, students, and that's going to be, we call it the health house right now, hoping that we will have a partner naming opportunity, but this facility will come online, and it's going to allow us to accommodate the needs of transfer nursing students who don't want to live in a traditional dorm with 18-year-olds. So a cohort of transfer nursing students in their last couple years of the nursing program. So that's being added online. Then we are also conducting a study. We have College Place, and you may remember, it was a number of years ago, a couple, two, three years ago, we actually had to request permission to bond so that we could buy College Place. It was a facility, a housing facility, suite-style facility on our property that was owned by another entity. The lease agreement was up, we had first right of refusal. If we didn't buy it, then somebody else might have, so we wanted to make sure that we did, and we did. Thank you for that support. We are now doing a study to look at whether or not and how much it will cost us to renovate the three and four suite units that make up that facility by adding another bed into each one of them. And that would add anywhere from 20 to 40 additional spots for us at a much more economical price than building a whole dorm. So that, we will have an answer to that question, and once we do have that answer, of course, I'll probably be coming to talk to you about how we move that project forward. But we're investigating whether or not it's tenable. And the other piece of the puzzle, in answer to your question, LC State owns about 11 different peripheral housing units, and we have living learning communities for side-by-side houses for education. We have a house that's predominantly occupied by healthcare students. We have a variety, and they're all contiguous with campus. Sometimes, when we purchase a property, we'll evaluate the property, and it, we, it can reasonably be converted to meaningful student housing, and sometimes not so much. Well, we had, recently had an acquisition of a property that's a double-sized lot, that's only a block away from campus, that was not going to be feasible to be able to utilize it for housing as-is, so we leveled it. Now I have a lot. And another conversation that we may have in the not-too-distant future will be looking at the possibilities of a three, P3 partnership of some kind, where we own the land, and somebody builds the facility for us on that land to accommodate students. So, we have plans in place, kind of incrementally moving one to the next to the next, operating, frankly, within very limited means, but also trying to figure out a way to get the job done.
Thank you. I think if we're going to, I appreciate your presentation, Dr. Pemberton, and we'll have one-on-one time with you here over the next two days. I think you're, in order to stay on schedule, we're going to have to conclude this portion and invite the students up here, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So I noticed that Superintendent Critchfield has joined us. Welcome, Superintendent. Thanks for joining us. I'd like to invite the students to join us at this time.
Good afternoon, thanks for joining us.
Hello, good afternoon.
Why don't we, so this, the way we've done this in the past is if we, if we could just kind of maybe move this way and have you all introduce yourselves and perhaps tell us what year you are, what you're studying, where, where you're from, and your introduction, and then what's worked best is if it's, if it's okay with you, is just all open it up to the board, and they'll ask questions, and you can decide who's best to respond. Does that, does that work? Okay, great. Why don't we start down here?
Hi, my name is Rain Martinez. I am an elementary ed major. This is my third year here at LC State. Originally, I'm from Cusky, Idaho, which is about an hour and a half down the river from here. And I'm here today representing the ASLCSC, our student government.
Hi there, my name is Kate Schneider. I am a sophomore here at LC State. I'm currently a nursing major, and I'm representing the LC State volleyball team, but more widely, LC State athletics. And then I also serve as our treasurer for the Association of Student Athletes, and I'm from Freeman, Washington, which is a very small school right outside of Spokane.
Hello, I'm Carol Correo. I'm from Idaho Falls. I'm a senior studying kinesiology, and I work at the admissions office as a work study.
Hi, my name is Rosalia Tamaya Navahar. I am from Caldwell, Idaho. I am a sophomore majoring in nursing. I was a camp student here at LC State and was given the opportunity to have the launch scholarship, and I currently work at the admissions office.
Hi, my name's Levi Johnson. I am currently a junior here at LC and studying justice studies. I'm from Cal Mesa, California, so quite a ways away. And then I'm, guess I'm primarily representing Ambassador Honor Society on campus, and I'm involved in seven clubs on campus, I think, now. And then I've also worked on-campus jobs and currently doing internship with probation and parole District Two.
My name is Xander London. I come from Nampa, Idaho, and I am a sophomore here at Lewiston Clark State College studying fire service technology. And just a little bit about me is I'm here representing our CTE programs, and simply after one year at this awesome college, I have a full-time firefighting job here in the state of Idaho.
Hello, I'm Connor Alexander. I'm a senior majoring in biology here. I'm a work scholar. I work in one of the labs on campus, and I also work in the tutoring center, and I'm a student athlete on the cross-country team.
Hello, I'm Fabian Repitrono, and I'm, my major is business administration. I'm from Salt Lake City, Utah. However, I live in Sandpoint, Idaho now, and I'm here representing the Second Chance Program, which is the prison education program. And, and yeah, I'm just willing to answer any questions you guys have, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. Questions from the board? Mr. Gilbert?
This is the best part of the whole two days, every time we do this, so thank you guys for taking the time. And it's, frankly, there's not a close second in, in the rest of the meeting, so, thank you.
Not even the bar agenda?
Not even the bar agenda, especially not that. I'm curious, you know, historically, obviously, the community of the, of the valley, Nesbitts County, whole Clearwater Valley has been incredibly supportive of, of LC, and we know that it's vital to the success of LC. But, when I look at the group in front of me, there's a number of you that, you know, California, Southern Idaho, other places that aren't from the valley. For those of you in particular, I'm kind of curious, you know, why LC? And not only why LC, but how did you arrive at LC? How were the, how were you recruited, or how did you end up at a, at a place that, you know, is sometimes, because of the marketing budget and other things, harder to find? So, for those of you not from the valley, I'd love to hear.
Start with Levi, since you came the furthest.
I guess the short answer is it's the only college I applied to, but the long part of that is my parents are both graduates of LC, and I have an older sister that's also a graduate of LC. And so for me, it just kind of made sense. There wasn't a lot of whole unknowns, and I was homeschooled most of my life, so I didn't like huge class sizes, then went to high school, graduated 20 other kids. So I just, that small college feel, and just having a lot of connections in the community already. I mean, like, big, big support in baseball. I played up here a little bit in high school in the summertime, and so kind of established roots. Like, I was sponsored by LC Athletic Department for two years, and so already having those pre-existing connections helped a lot to just be like, this is going to be a place where I can have support, and I don't have to worry about, like, figuring everything out already. I already have it all figured out, so I think that was a big reason why I came.
Anybody else want to?
So growing up in the Pacific Northwest, I was born in Moscow, Idaho, and then I moved up to Spokane. I mean, LC State has a great reputation in the area. I had heard about it all growing up, and I knew that it was a great college, but it was also a great small college. And so that was something that was really interesting for me and kind of piqued my interest initially. And then moving forward, I knew that I wanted to play volleyball in college, so that was something that was super important to me. But during my recruiting process, I told all the coaches I spoke with that I never wanted to compromise my academic experience for my athletic experience. And so that was something that was important to me, and not only my family, coming from a family with two former Division One athletes. So I knew that my education was super important to me, so when I initially hopped on a phone call with Coach Katie Palmer, she honestly really sold me on the school. She did a great job recruiting me as an athlete, but also something that was huge in my journey coming here was I wanted to pursue an athletic career, but I also wanted to be a nursing major. And that's not something that's very widely accepted in the athletic world. It's difficult. It's a big process, it takes a lot of time and a lot of commitment, but something that LC State could offer me was the ability to compete as an athlete at a very high level and also pursue my career in nursing. And so that's one of the main things that ultimately led me to LC State, was that opportunity to be able to pursue my education at a very high level and also be a student athlete and do what I had worked the last 17 years for and accomplish all those goals and dreams. But I think that that's something that's really unique that LC State does provide, is the ability to be a student athlete and pursue a health sciences degree. I know many of my fellow student athletes are in the rad tech program or the nursing program, and it's honestly a great opportunity, and that's one of the big things that brought me to LC State, coming from the Pacific Northwest.
Thank you. Anyone else? Carol?
Yeah, Carol, thank you. So I have an older sister who got her associates in paralegal at CEI, and she got told about the opportunity to get her bachelor's in paralegal here at LC. So she was already going here when I was graduating from high school, and then she, I had already applied to other universities, but she told me to also apply to this one, and I did. And I was ready to go to ISU, but then I got a call from a recruiter from the camp program, actually, the College Assistant Migrant Program. And so I was able to get that scholarship, and so that ultimately was what helped me decide to come to LC, because it really was going to help me be able to come to college and not have to really worry about how I was going to pay for it.
Not an easy drive from IF to Lewiston.
Not really, but it's fun. I enjoy just listening to music and drive.
What high school?
I'm sorry.
Which high school?
I graduated from Skyline High School.
Thank you. Other questions?
Oh, I just wanted to ask, some, if you're from Idaho, you have the opportunity to do advanced placement or dual-credit classes, and I just wondered if that helped any of you, and if you want to talk about that experience, and if most of the credits were able to transfer and that sort of thing.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll comment on this. Coming in, I grew up in Nampa and took as many dual-credit classes as I possibly could in high school. And in my two years here at LC State, I've had a total of three credits in, like, gen ed that I've had to do, and it's helped me focus on what I truly want to be able to do and pursue a career in firefighting a lot better.
I'll speak on this as well. I did take dual credits in high school, and they also helped me focus on what I actually want to be doing, which is education. But also, I took dual credits, which helped me get my CNA license, because originally I had wanted to go into the medical field. And it doesn't seem like it is a big help to my degree right now, but it is a huge help for me, because I work and I go to school, and my CNA license definitely helps me to pay my way through school. So taking dual credits was really like a life changer for me, because that's a job that I can work while I'm in school, that pays pretty good, helps me be debt-free throughout my college experience here.
I also took a bunch of dual credit when I was in high school, and I was actually able to graduate with my associates while in high school, so that was really great, and it definitely helped me be able to just come into LC and be able to do and focus on what I wanted to major in. So definitely helped a lot.
Great, thank you. Fabian, maybe you can comment on just the role the Second Chance Program played in your life journey and, you know, what, how far you were able to get at different stages and where that's taken you?
Okay, yeah, definitely. So I was part of the pilot program for the Second Chance Program, and it was definitely something that has changed my life and helped me, you know, broaden my future and get me into a better position to where I can, you know, just get better employment opportunities in the future, and also like, it, it gave me some incentive, because I heard about the program that it was going to start, so I didn't even have my GED at the time. So it gave me some incentive to, okay, this is what I'm going to do. So I went ahead and I got my GED, so that way I could pursue this program. So then I got the GED and right on time for the Second Chance Program to start, so I started the pilot program. And it was, it's been a, you know, it's been a journey, because it's been a little while since I was in school, so it definitely is something that will help a lot of people that were in the situation that I was in, and it will help them, you know, just have a better future for them. And, and you know, that once they get out, they will have something to fall back on instead of just keep on. just keep on going through the cycles that they've been going through, you know. And I think that this will definitely help the recidivism rate. And, you know, just in our community as a whole, I think it will definitely help, you know, just help people build a career, and something that they can actually be, you know, happy to do. And also, it will just, it will just help everything along the path. So it's definitely a great program, and it's really helped me, so.
Terrific, thank you.
Yeah.
That's really cool, Fabian.
Thank you.
How far did you get in that? Did you get your associates in business, or how far did you get in your educational journey as part of that program?
So currently, I'm a sophomore.
Okay.
So next year, I will be getting my associate's degrees in that. So I started in, I think it was 23 we started. So I went through that, and then I've been out for a year. So, and I just continued with my education. I work a full-time job, so I build homes. And so doing that, I've only been taking two classes each semester, so it's taken me a little bit longer. But definitely something that I'm going to keep pursuing. And as soon as I get my associates, I'll just keep going with the, with the bachelor's and see where we get with it all. So it's definitely a great program, and, you know, I think that we should, you know, just keep it going, and maybe even evolve and put some more money towards it. That would be a great thing. It will help, you know, not only the people that are incarcerated, but it will also help the community, like I was saying. It will give a, you know, just a positive outlook on somebody else's life, so.
Yeah, that's great. Well, education's a journey, right? There's no defined timeline. We sometimes do our institutions a disservice, and President Pemberton talked about this, where we set up metrics to say, you know, what's your six-year graduation rate? And we're going to hold you accountable for that one. But we do recognize that it's a journey, and particularly for non-traditional students carrying a full-time job, that, you know, just, you just keep going, you know? And you just learn every day, and you got milestones along the way. So congratulations on your journey. Yeah, Mr. Gilbert?
So how many of you, just maybe show our hands, plan to remain either in the valley or in Idaho when you're done? All of you, that's great. I'd be curious, that's what we want, right? Educating Idaho. Take it from California, too. Idaho students, Idaho, and then keeping you here. I'm curious, you know, the job market's evolving fairly rapidly at this moment in time. I'm kind of curious, just your thoughts on, you know, many of you are working now, you're actually doing internships, you're doing all the right things. But, you know, any comments on kind of the, what you see in the job market in the fields that you're in? You're all in, for the most part, in high, really high-demand fields. Are you feeling great about that? Are you concerned? Any issues as you're somewhere, you're getting close to being out?
As you guys well know, educators are in very high demand, kind of everywhere.
You're hired, by the way.
So I think that's really given me, there's two perspectives that I have on this. It's really given me a positive outlook, as I know that likely in the future I will have a job somewhere as a new teacher, when in the past I've kind of worried about, like, just getting a job as a new teacher. I don't have that experience to back up my education. And the other part about that, the other perspective that I have is, why do we have so many job openings for teachers? But I think, I think when we look at those two perspectives, it's important to notice that it's because educators are so important. And so I think that having an in-demand field like that can be a really good thing, and can give college students like myself, like, a positive outlook, knowing that they will have a job, and giving them something to work towards, and encouraging them to continue with their degree, rather than stopping because they don't think that they'll have a job in that field.
I would say for me, I mean, being a nursing major, again, another career that's in pretty high demand. But one thing that LC State does really well is prepare their students, especially in the nursing students. And, I mean, I don't need to tell you guys all about that, you've heard it from plenty of other people. But that's something that I feel really confident in. I feel confident that when I go through the nursing program, and I ultimately complete that program and graduate, that going forward, when I have to take my NCLEX, that if I do all, do all the right things, and do good in school, and prepare well, that my university, or, well, hopefully university, has prepared me well for the NCLEX and to pass that. And so that's something that I find a lot of comfort in, knowing that I'm going to a college that is going to prepare me for my career, and to get that certification and pass the NCLEX, but also be a nurse, and have those skills, and be confident in that. I mean, talking with other nursing students, they're confident in the skills that they're learning, and the faculty is so invested and so involved. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else studying nursing, because I'm confident in the people that are teaching me, and I know that they're confident in the future of healthcare in Idaho. So that just instills a lot of confidence in me moving forward, and hopefully becoming a nurse in the great state of Idaho, so.
I think for me, kind of answer that question, is just like, LC is super good at building, like, connections and networking. So like, I want to be a police officer once I graduate. And so there's a lot of, like, local police officers or, like, state patrol that have graduated from LC, so they're always, like, in communication with professors and stuff. So I feel like that's really prepared me well, especially now being interned with probation and parole. I think there's four people right now in the office that have graduated from LC within the past 10 years. And so they're like, hey, like, make sure you take these classes at LC, that's going to really help you. Or, so I feel like I'm really prepared to, like, once I graduate this spring, to be able to just go, like, apply and feel confident that my education is going to help me, because big thing, like, in law enforcement, it's just people not knowing any, like, anything about the Constitution or anything. And LC is really big on that in their program. So just, it's really prepared me to just have a better idea of what I'm actually getting into, and not just blindly going into it.
Thank you.
Say, not a lot of people are really dying to hire a biologist. It's definitely a, it definitely is something that requires more education. And getting into a graduate program, a PhD program, or an MD program, or PA program, can be really hard from a small college. But I think we are doing a pretty excellent job of preparing our students who want to do that for that. There are four professors on campus here who run undergraduate labs. And I've been to several conferences, national conferences, even with huge institutions. And I'm just a student there. I mean, there's nothing that sets me aside from one of them, aside from them paying $80,000 a year to go to school, but. And I also feel very supported by the people around me. All of my professors have PhDs in biology, so they know what the process is like. And our pre-medical advising is very excellent as well. Dr. Hornby does a good job, so I think we're doing a good job in terms of that.
So I'd like to say, so LC has given me the opportunity to, you know, like I said, I build homes. And so I got the field experience. And, you know, I probably would, if I, if I wouldn't have been part of attending this college, then I would have just kept on building homes. And, you know, that takes a toll on your body, and you can only do it for so long. So now it's given me the opportunity to learn the business side of it all. And so that way, I can use my field experience, you know, in my portfolio, and then I can use the degree that I get. And then I can, you know, my goal is to become a project manager. And so, you know, this has just given me that opportunity to be able to use both sides of it, and collaborate, and make myself have a better future. And, you know, not only me have a better future, but my family and the community. And my kids see me going to college, and now it's paving the way for them to, you know, have some inspiration to want to go to college also. So they're like, if Dad can do it, we can do it, you know? So it's definitely a positive situation. And I would like to say, you know, for the whole LC staff that helped, you know, with the prison education, it's just like 110%. You know, they gave it their all. And it was something that, you know, was a pilot program. They didn't know if it was going to work or not, but as you can see with the numbers and everything, that it definitely worked. And it's thriving, and, you know, I just really appreciate that, and I just want to let it be known, from the student advisors, to the president, to everybody that was involved, you know, it's just, it's just a wonderful situation, and it's a great program. And I think it will really help if we just, you know, keep in mind that we need to keep this program going, and pump it up some more, too, you know, so.
Well, all of you can be ambassadors. Higher ed in the state needs ambassadors. What I mean by ambassadors, you need to share, you're all such great examples of what higher ed can do in your life journey. And so my ask of you is to, whether you're going back into the corrections and being an ambassador of what the opportunity is, or going back to your high school, go back to your communities, and just tell your story of, of the experience you had at LC. I mean, your stories will probably resonate more than a $225,000 marketing budget. So you need to be real ambassadors for, for the institution. Any final questions?
I just wanted to ask, I know Roselia mentioned that you, I'm sorry, wanted, you utilized the Launch Scholarship. I just wondered, show of hands, how many were able to get a Launch Scholarship? Okay, great. Thank you.
Any final, no, good? Okay, well, thank you very much for being with us today. Appreciate all your comments. Hey, let's transition right in. I believe we have a number of members of the faculty and staff and admin who are going to join us. Please join us up front. I could see how proud President Pemberton was of her students and how they represented the institution. I'm sure all of you sort of had the same feelings when you hear the stories of those students.
It's an incredibly tough act to follow.
Yeah. Yeah, we should probably have you guys go first, because it is a tough act.
Part of it's that we're your favorites.
No, we don't play favorites here. Why don't we do the same thing we did with the students, and you heard how that went, but just if we could just go down and introduce yourself, and, I mean, obviously, just what you, where you would fit in the institution, maybe how long you've been here? Anything else you want to say, kind of as an opening? And we'll kind of work our way down, and then I'll open it up to the board for questions. But thank you all for being here. We'll start there.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Brent Booth. I'm an assistant professor in the Business and Computer Science Division. I teach on the business side. I have had the privilege to work here for approximately four years.
Hello, my name is Allison Silvestri, and I'm the Associate Director of Development and Alumni Engagement here at LC State. I've been in my current role for three years, but overall at the institution for eight.
Hi, I'm Jack Dewerner. I'm the Assistant Controller. I'm also the Chair of the Professional Staff Organization. And I was recently accepted to the Emerging Leaders Program through the National Association of College and University Business Officers, or NAUCUBO.
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Bell. I teach Engineering, Technology, and CNC Machining in the Career and Technical Education Division. And I am here also representing the faculty of Lewis Clark State College as the Faculty Senate Chair and Faculty Association Chair.
My name's Heidi Green. I'm Associate Professor in Nursing and Health Sciences. My journey at LC State started in 2004 as a student, continued to, or 2004 as a student, continued to 2008 as a graduate, and then I've been faculty here for the last 10 years.
Hi, my name is Bryce Camers. I'm an instructor of English. I also direct the Writing Center here on campus. I've been here for 13 years, and I was also an undergraduate here.
Hi, my name's Diana Higgins. I'm a buyer in the Purchasing Department. I'm also representing the Classified Staff Organization, and I have worked here at LC State for 10 years.
Hello, my name is Robert Clifford, and I am the President of the LCSC Foundation. It's been my pleasure to be on the foundation for the last 13 years. It is a great organization. We love giving our scholarships and our support to LC State.
Great, thank you all for being here.
Mr. Gilbert? Yeah, first of all, I want to say hi to Robert. Robert and I were classmates at Idaho a long, long time ago, and he's actually married to my cousin, so.
Robert, do you have any stories you'd like to share?
I'm curious, actually, you know, this is for all of you, but specifically for you, we've seen a pretty significant maturation, it feels like, in the last number of years at LC. You guys have always done an incredible job, my time on the board, your time on the board, those of us that's been around for a while, of doing a lot with a little, and doing it incredibly well. But, you know, it feels like now it's starting to evolve. Okay, so, you know, it's going to be Lewis Clark University. There's now, the endowment is starting to become a little bit of size, the amount of money that you're starting to raise, you're able to kind of go out and say, all right, look, we're going to, you know, we've got a pretty hairy goal in terms of the 3.2 that you need to find to do other things. Are you guys feeling that at the institution, that while it's, it's still going and always going to be kind of really scrappy, but that it's actually also kind of evolving into more, or kind of institution that can meet students in a variety of places and where it's at? I mean, that feels like what's, what's occurring here. And what do you think the, you know, kind of the next step for the institution is? Whether that's in the foundation, or in your, in all of your disciplines?
I'd be happy to start with that answer. Yes, Bill, it is really nice. I think in our community, we are starting to see a lot more endowments being created with the scholarship, with the foundation. And so that's really nice, people wanting to make that legacy in specific areas. And so that's been able to be a good help. And it's also something that LC State Foundation has been able to help the college itself with solutions, such as the funding that we've been, you know, we had taken back. We're looking for ways to do that. But as far as, you know, being that, I don't know, scrappy kind of organization, and I know what you mean, the foundation is growing quite a bit. We have several community business, and even a legislative leader that's on our board, Lori McCann, that helps us with that concept, I guess, of education on a broader standpoint, and the needs in the field. So I guess with that, that 20 million, I just want to say this, I wrote this, some of these numbers down, 85% of that goes to scholarships for students in a lot of different fields, you know, across the board. 15% goes to help LC State in their various capacities, different needs and stuff like that they have for their mission. And so it's a really great honor, it's our fiduciary responsibility. And for the 19 of us that are standing on the board, the seven executive directors, led by Jenny Jones, who is our executive director, it's, it's really been an honor to help out the state, LC State, excuse me. Would anybody else like to?
Yeah, I can speak specifically to our Nursing and Health Sciences programs. As far as growth as an institution, you know, our goal is to be a pioneering nursing program. And we are accomplishing that in so many ways, specifically through technology and our simulation center. Our next goal is to be a certified simulation center. As you all saw last year, we have the Hill in our Health Education Center. So I think, you know, our goal is to be a pioneering, cutting-edge nursing program in radiography technology. So that, specifically for us, that's how we're kind of accomplishing the growth of the, of the university.
I would say that from the faculty perspective overall, the institution is maturing. Like you mentioned, we've gone from being the underdog in absolutely everything we do, to embracing students in our classes that this is their first-choice institution. They've come here not because this was their only choice, it was because this was their only choice. They picked us on purpose. And faculty are energized to have that level of student energy in our classrooms, in our campus, doing the things that we do. And so looking at where we're going to be in the next five years, as we mature from the scrappy underdog to the big dog in the neighborhood, we're never going to be the big dog in the neighborhood. We're just not, right? That's not who we are. Who we are is not going to be the big school. We're going to be the best school. We're going to continue to drive the best leadership and help support the best students in their areas as we move forward. We'll continue to set that standard.
Yeah, I want to coattail on that. I run our Nursing and Health Sciences Instagram page, and so I do this thing called the Student Spotlight. And I get to interview our, our students. And the question I always ask them is, why did you choose us? And every single one of them, it's because they wanted to come here. It wasn't because this was second choice or third choice. They specifically chose us for a reason, not because we're the biggest, but because we're the best.
I have a question maybe for the faculty, you know, one of the, so this board is over not just the governance over higher ed, but we also have a role to play in K-12. So one of the things I'm always interested in getting your perspective on is just, what are you seeing in terms of the preparedness of the students that are coming from the Idaho K-12 system? Have you seen improvement? And we had the COVID years, right? And that was just a mess. But what are you seeing today in terms of the students that But what are you seeing today in terms of the students that are coming here? Do you see any gaps that we should be aware of that we need to focus on in the K-12 system? Maybe start with English.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, I grade our entrance exams, what we call our WPEs. So I probably encounter, you know, a diverse set of students kind of as they're coming in. I would say out of that cohort, the majority seem to be prepared to enter English 101 without any kind of like core requisite model. There is still a good portion of students who, you know, kind of struggle with the grammatical framework of English and, you know, they tend to get placed into a core requisite. And so they get the support that they need. But yeah, we still definitely struggle with some students not being adequately prepared, for sure.
I think an interesting thing of note in that is that there is improvement over both math and English. Those are going to be the big areas that we're always going to struggle with, right? Especially with rural schools in Idaho. And things are getting better. I think that probably the issue that we see quite often is that, it's not that the students aren't prepared, it's that the perception of what they're expected to know is probably outside. So many students that in high school will have gone through a math class in their freshman year, then not had math again all the way until they come here and take their placement exams to find out that they test poorly when they're coming in for placement exams. It's not because they don't know the material, they have been prepared, they just haven't had a recent experience or exposure to it. And so it appears as though in those exams that we're having that particular gap where a lot of times, once students are in those classes, we find that they don't actually have the gaps that we perceive that they have.
Anybody else want to take that on?
I'll say something. I've been teaching for nearly 20 years and so I've seen a lot of changes. And of course, the COVID students, there definitely was some real challenges there to the point where you're just thinking, you know, what am I doing? Am I making a difference? Because they don't seem to be wanting to be there. And so the last two semesters have been a real joy because I'm seeing it swing once again in the right direction. So I'm happy with the way things are going and hope it stays that way.
That's good to hear, thank you. I asked that question because the superintendent couldn't be here today. So Debbie, appreciate that question?
100%.
Other questions?
I just wanted to ask, Robert, if, I know you've mentioned you'd been on the Foundation Board for 13 years. Have you considered a capital campaign at any time or is that something maybe in the future you could do?
Yes, we have, in fact. Three point two million dollars. The capital campaigns have actually gotten a little bit more complex, I guess, than what we used to do. We used to, in fact, when I first came on board, we had one that was only about seven and a half million, but it went very well. And so this is about 13 years ago, helped to fund a lot of different projects. So now it's more about getting the knowledge of our alumni, of our donors, but reaching out to all the different areas. And so it takes more of what I like to call a machine or a database that we are using. And it's more of a five-year campaign. It is something that is on our radar and we're just working that initial stuff. But the campaigns are also much bigger now. You know, that seven and a half million that was our last campaign, that was, you know, like I said, quite a few years ago, you know, it's just a drop in the bucket to what campaigns are able to get now, professionally run, managed campaigns. So yes, it is on the agenda.
So Bill mentioned this in his opening question. And I've been amazed by what you all have been able to accomplish with the limited resources you have. And obviously, a lot of that's just work ethic. I mean, just doing, jumping in and doing what you need to do, when you need to do it. I've always admired the culture of this institution because of that. We've made, I'll use a global we, we're in a more challenging environment now. President mentioned the rescission of the Eames Grants, that creates challenges. We have a state budget issue we're wrestling with that requires some holdback. So I'm, just be interested in your reaction of where's, where are you on the burnout factor? And just talk to me about the morale of the place and how you all think we're, the institution's dealing with what is not an easy situation.
Well, burnout is a real thing, obviously, trying to keep up with all the demands because we're not only teachers, we're also mentors and we're advisors and serve on committees. And so there, you're pulled in a lot of directions. And so that can be challenging. Fortunately, our department is growing and we have a lot of people who volunteer, so it's not just one person doing all the committees. So we spread it out, which is really good. We have great leadership. Faculty is very supportive of one another. If they see somebody having a bad day, they're there to help pick them up and get through, you know, a particular challenge. And we have some newer faculty that have joined who've, are not used to the experiences of having a frustrated student or whatever. And so to be able to help them through those times has been nice. So we have some well-experienced faculty as well as new ones that, and so as a team, we're getting through it and we will.
I'll add that one too. I would say in Nursing and Health Sciences, the area that, first of all, we do this because we love our students. Our students are awesome. And the reality is with nursing and radiography, we could make twice as much money doing something else, but we don't because we love our students. And at the end of the day, that's what keeps us going. With the 3% reduction, we're specifically experiencing that with the use of our adjunct faculty, which we count on day in and day out, especially for our clinical rotations. Our radiography program has students from Sandpoint all the way to Boise. And we have two FTE that teach in that program. So they specifically use a lot of adjuncts. In nursing, we do as well. And so the 3% holdback is, we're seeing that, we're absorbing it, we're doing it, we're, you know, digging our feet in at the end of the day. But is it attainable, lasting? I don't know. It's...
You're putting a great face on it. Our morale is better than it should be. That's, that's the truth. Our morale is better than it should be. Our people are digging in and they're finding joy in the students' environment, they're finding the joy in the, in the student energy that we can get. But the truth is, our morale is better than it should be.
That's the power of strong culture, right? If you have a culture that's really student-focused and that's where it can cover for a lot. Any other, anybody else want to comment on?
I'll just concur with everyone else. Travel has kind of been impacted, conferences have been impacted due to this kind of scale back. But thankfully, other people are stepping up. Last week, I had the opportunity, oh, my mic's out, to the General Education Summit. And that was such a rejuvenation for morale, just to kind of be around my peers at neighboring institutions, see what other people are doing. So there's still opportunity there, for sure. And likewise, I kind of think that, I like to joke that I've almost been promoted due to attrition, that we, my division in particular is a lot smaller than it used to be. But everyone is kind of rising to the occasion. This week, we have our Stegner visiting lecture and it's a must-attend event. Everyone loves this event just because we are kind of a tight-knit community these days. So again, morale.
Yeah, I might jump in too. This last week, I had the chance to go to Chicago and meet with dozens of other business officers around the country. And especially speaking with them, I couldn't believe the difference in type of energy and positivity that I've been seeing here compared to what I was hearing about. And it was very eye-opening for me, just to hear the different challenges they're going through. And it just seems minimal compared to the way we're feeling it.
Yeah, I mean, President Pemberton spoke about it, but the demographic cliff is real. And it's having a dramatic impact on institution like yours all over the country, which is probably the root of what you were hearing. I think it's quite remarkable when you look at the, what you've all been able to achieve and, you know, given the location and what we're dealing with. So you should all feel proud of that. Other, yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I would be surprised if you guys weren't all incredibly supportive of this. But I mentioned earlier the change to, from college to university. I'd love to hear your perspective on how you think it, how, your perspective on how it's going to benefit the institution if and when that change occurs and it becomes Lewis Clark State University. Either your job, how you recruit students, anything, I'm just curious. We've heard it from the top many, many times, but I'd like to hear it from you.
Bill, I could start. Go ahead.
Nope, you're up.
All right. I think it does represent something different, going from a college, what's considered, what was once considered kind of a community college, got the four-year and now the master's program and graduate program. And so having the university behind it not only represents more of what this school is, but I think it will help, for instance, in our capacity, Jenny Jones Hall, I believe, worked up at U of I and so we feel very fortunate. And as far as that larger campaign...
She's awesome.
Yeah, when I, thank you, thank you. When I first came on board, Mary Hasenroll was our Executive Director, so that seven and a half million was quite a stretch for us. What we're talking about, what she did up at U of I and the new ideas she's brought on, I think are going to be only exponential, you know, by possibly going to a university type of foundation as opposed to what might have been perceived as something that, you know, as much of the merits of the school are and the 20 million that the foundation is right now, I can see that growing a lot more and being able to provide a lot more programs and a lot more scholarships to the students. So that's one of the things on my side that I see helping out with that name change.
Makes sense. Did you want to weigh in, Allison, from the alumni or development?
Yeah, so we had the presentation at our alumni board meeting and overall, the alumni that sit on that and then within our chapters, I think kind of were like, yeah, that makes sense, like, we should be a university. And so I think having that perspective from those students that did attend it as Lewis Clark State College and being supportive of that university change. And as I shared earlier in my small group meeting, you know, we struggle connecting with our alumni and we're really working on building tradition, which sounds kind of crazy for an institution this old, but that's just something that I work really closely with our Student Involvement Coordinator, Kristen Myers, on is, our students deserve that real college experience, that university experience, and how can we give it to them? And I think kind of moving into homecoming this year, celebrating the name change, just will really bring it all together. And so I'd say from the alumni side, it's overall very, very supportive of it.
I can speak to someone who went here way back when, Lewis Clark State College. The growth has been exponential. And when the idea was first introduced, you know, my initial reaction was, well, why? LCSC sounds so good. LCSU does not. But it just makes sense with the growth that we've experienced as an institution now offering master's degree programs. Nothing about the student experience here and the courses they get and the quality education they get is going to change. Our name will just better reflect what we offer. And I've seen it over the last 20 years. So I think, I personally think it's a great thing and that seems to be the general consensus in my division.
Diana, did you want to?
Yes, I wanted to speak about the Classified Staff in our meetings. It's been received with complete positivity. And just on a personal note, I, when I reflect back about our past and how we started as Lewis Clark Normal School and all of the iterations that we've been, and this is just one more step and it just opens up so many possibilities that I think there might be potential things about this name change that we might not even anticipate, we might not even know to anticipate. So I think it's pretty exciting and everybody that I have talked to amongst the Classified Staff, I think we're pretty excited and optimistic.
Thank you. Debbie or Cindy, I don't want to forget that you're out there. Do you have any questions for the panel? I hate to see heads shaking, so I guess that's no. Yes, Peter?
I'm going to, I'd like to actually put some of the instructors on this question. The children that you're getting in from high school, I understand that they may have a mastery of the rope mechanics of a particular field. Are they thinking on their own? Are they coming in with the ability to say, okay, I hear you, what about? The second part of that is, it's an older expression in education, but are they also coming in with the ability to get knocked down and get back up and push forward? For me, that becomes that essential piece of coming out of high school. College is a different challenge, we all went through it. But that's a question I really have in my mind. Are we coming out of high school preparing children who can think and not just regurgitate?
So critical thinking and resiliency. What are you seeing in that regard?
Yeah, it's, the biggest challenge we have now, of course, is AI. That makes it very easy for them to not think and not think critically. In my classes, I always do case studies and we try to do them live in class so they can't look up the answer. You know, they're supposed to, of course, read the case study, come prepared, we have a discussion, so, and we try to, of course, play devil's advocate to get them to think and so just agree with that person in class who may be popular or whatever type thing. So it's a challenge because written assignments now come back where it's oftentimes looks plagiarized or AI usage, that's unfortunate. And so we're trying different methods to get them to think critically because I also have seen that decline over the, you know, few years since AI has come in. AI is a great tool, we're trying to teach our students how to use it and use it well. But right now, it's, you know, not, resiliency, that can be a hard thing. There's a lot of sensitive students out there, but you have to realize that, yeah, it's the real world out there, your boss is going to want you to perform. And your feelings are going to matter to them to some degree, but performing your job is critical. And so being able to accept it if you get a C on a paper. I know you want to be an A student, well, you could still be an A student, but you have to work hard to get there. So anyway, things are definitely kind of on a wave, at least in what I see in my classroom.
It's so interesting you ask that question because this morning I walked around the hallways and I asked my coworkers, what are three words that you would use to describe our students? And resilient was one of them, over and over and over. So to answer your question, yes, they are.
And good, I find that encouraging because I'm an old man, but we've, sometimes we've model coddled. And, and we need to let them understand that failure is not final, that they can, they can start with a C or a D and get through. And I sometimes worry a little too much perhaps that, well, you know, we got to keep everybody happy. And that, that can't be the answer.
Anybody else have a perspective on that question they'd like to share? Any other questions from the board? All right. Well, thank you for all you do and we appreciate your time today. And I think the, the fruits of your effort were very visible in the students that spoke before you, so thanks for that. Yeah, appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Our new Executive Director is very intense and she doesn't schedule breaks in our agendas.
Are we running through or?
No, so I'm going to, I am going to use my executive authority to go into recess for 10 minutes and when we come, so let's, let's re-adjourn at 3:25 with the bar agenda. Is that all right? Thank you. Thank you.
Did I send you the text that the Apollo guy sent me?
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna ask that same question about how, you know, particularly the English teacher, like, how prepared are these kids? Yeah.
Yeah.
Good one.
Okay.
Called the meeting back to order. Do we have superintendent and Cindy on? Yep, there they are. Welcome back. Well, so are we moving now into the favorite part of the agenda? Is that what we're doing?
Least favorite, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to turn the agenda over to Mr. Gilbert to walk us through the business affairs and human resources items.
Oh, I was gonna ask Patrick and Heidi to come up. They're so far ahead of me. I should look up. First item on the bar agenda, and I, first of all, I'd like to thank Kurt for taking control of the bar agenda at the last meeting. I wasn't able to be there because I was enjoying my son's wedding in Italy, which was better than the bar meeting. But anyway, thank you for doing that, Kurt. First item is Board Policy 2G regarding faculty, institutional faculty only. I'm gonna, rather than me give the summary, I'm gonna give it to Heidi to give the quick summary on this one. And this is a first reading.
Thank you, Chair Gilbert, members of the board. This policy update is thorough, and that's why you'll see the two copies in your, in your board packet so that it's actually readable. This policy needed some, some attention kind of from start to finish. So we did a lot of updating, adding references to other policies that weren't even available when this policy was last revised. So for example, to the academic freedom policy, we did some cross referencing there. We also improved some areas around what would be counted in the, in the tenure review process to expand the ways in which student evaluations are considered, to modernize in that area. And we also made some changes that offer institutional presidents some, some different avenues for flexibility because there were some, some scenarios that also weren't considered when this policy was first, was first drafted. And then finally, we also improved and expanded the section around post tenure review. That's a result of the resolution from December of 2024, and also added a requirement for a faculty code of conduct because that also is a result of that, of that resolution. And then I'm happy to take any further questions you might have.
Are there questions for Heidi on this? Again, this is a first reading. If not, I will go to motion, if you're okay with that, Kurt.
Yeah, please.
Okay. I move to approve the first reading of amendments to Board Policy 2G, policies regarding faculty, institutional faculty only, as presented in attachment one.
Second.
Thank you, second, second by Mr. Turnbull. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Bill?
Great. Thanks, Heidi. First I will, I think, is Mark on there?
Yeah.
There's Mark. Hi, Mark. We'll have, Mark hasn't been joining us, who everybody knows is head of internal audit for Osby and is, in my opinion, the most humble rock star we have. So, Mark, thank you for, for joining us today. Second item on the agenda is Board Policy 5H, which is audit, risk, and compliance. It's a first reading. And I will, I don't know, Patrick, if you have any comments before I turn it to Mark?
No.
Okay. Mark, I would love to turn this to you, just to have you give a quick overview, if you would.
Sure. This policy has been updated a couple of times for the internal audit consolidation. On these latest changes, there's some just kind of wording and housekeeping changes throughout the policy. There's an update in the, for the risk management section, and also some additional internal audit updates to, to bring it up to internal audit standards for us. But the biggest changes in the policy are with the compliance function or the compliance portion. And that makes some pretty, I would say, some pretty significant changes that are needed for just general governance, for the board to meet its general governance obligations. The big, the biggest change would be to have a separate compliance officer on each campus. And, and then just some rules around how the compliance office reports to the committee and how the committee oversees resources.
Good. Are there questions? And actually, we should, Mark, I'm sure you would agree, I want to thank the institutions who have been really all very great to work with in, in sort of as we have moved the audit function along and as we've kind of increased the sort of cooperation between the institutions and, and the office. And so this policy, these policy changes reflect that as well, Mark. But I'm sure you would agree that the institutions have been really helpful in this process.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Are there questions?
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, please.
So one of the, when this was presented at bar, one of the concerns that was raised by the institution is, was, there was alignment on directionally where this recommendation is, particularly around having a dedicated compliance officer. But the concern was raised that in this fiscal environment where we're dealing with old backs and budget constraints, the addition of FTEs could be problematic in the short run. So I don't know, Mark, if you want to comment on sort of, maybe, maybe we can deal with this between the first and second reading, but just the, the expectation on timing of getting here, given kind of budgetary constraints?
Right. I guess one point to make is, that begs the question on whether or not it's resourced currently, right? But also to address their concerns immediately is they can seek an exception from, or not an exception, but an alternate structure, approval of an alternate structure from the audit committee to kind of make this more of a long-term sort of change, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Jen, I'd like you to.
Yes, President Leibig, Chairman Gilbert, you know, Mark and I have talked about this extensively, and we certainly understand the challenges that the institutions face around FTE and the resourcing of this. So Mark's point is an important one. And while we certainly want to be flexible and work with our institutions to be responsive to this, I'm also very concerned about making sure that this is adequately resourced. And we do have it appropriately staffed and working with the institutions to think through how we do that because I am concerned about these roles getting subsumed into other responsibilities of the institutions when we know that proper investment and compliance allows our institutions to save money and actually serves the institutions and the system so well. And so we were happy to partner with the institutions as we work through some of their challenges. But I also don't want to kind of inadvertently set an expectation that exceptions are going to be given because I think we really do need to understand what the needs are, and we need to see a serious commitment to investing in these, these roles.
Well, yeah, the ARC function, and anybody knows in kind of modern enterprise, and Kurt, you understand this, David, you understand this, and any that have said in any, you know, large nonprofit or corporate boards, that this becomes kind of the key function, frankly, for understanding and managing the institution to the risks that you have. And, you know, I think our institutions do a great job of that. But for anybody that would question whether this is critical, if you just think about the size and the scope of each of the institutions that are being managed here, to do it without this is, would be, well, it's just untenable. So I think it's a good question to ask, and we can, we can certainly be accommodating as we, but we need to get, we will get there. Are there any other questions for Mark on this? If not, I'll go to motion.
Please.
I move to approve the first reading of the proposed amendments to Board Policy 5H as presented in attachment one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
You gotta be quick in this group to get the second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Bill?
Okay. Third item on the agenda is from Boise State University. It's related to Board Policy 5X. And it is, Boise State is requesting revisions to improve clarity, streamline reporting, and update outdated references in, in the policy. The proposed amendment modernizes the formula to use to calculate annual institutional athletic spending cap for Boise State, Idaho State, University of Idaho, and LC. Stacy Pearson has joined us as well from Boise State, and Patrick, Stacy, would you like to make a couple of comments related to the first reading of this motion?
Certainly. Our interest was to, to look at that policy as well as some other policies in terms of streamlining. And in that particular one, I was familiar with that from my past service to Boise State University, is the calculation being a little bit difficult, well, it wasn't possible to anticipate it. And so we identified the three-year average, separating it out by institution, so that we could look at our each institution's general account and tuition, and then calculate it based on a three-year average, and selected a 6% cap only for the reason of kind of not harming anybody from the previous calculation, and then setting the minimum at 5 million. That was part of it, as well as there needed to be some updates to. That was part of it as well as there needed to be some updates to the policy because it had some references to V.R., which had changed, and so it was that as well as gaining those efficiencies.
And it's worth noting Boise State has discussed these changes with all the other four-year institutions, and they're all supportive of the change because, you know, because of the situation that Boise State's in. So the revised formula, just to be clear, does set the spending cap at the greater of 5 million or 6% of the average of the prior three years, state general funds and institutional funds. Are there any questions? And this is a first reading.
Maybe clarify the difference between what the cap is versus what, how you actually budget, because those are two different things.
Certainly. The cap is different than what they may actually receive. If we change this policy, I'll be able to calculate the cap in April when we set all of the other budgets, but for example, for the current fiscal year, we have notified athletics that they will be at, stay at last year's cap because of the current budget reductions.
Good.
So the cap provides you with more visibility, more flexibility, but at the end of the day, the, the athletic department still has to balance their budget.
Correct.
Additional questions? If not, I will go to motion.
Please.
I move to approve the first reading of the proposed amendments to Board Policy Section 5X as presented in Attachment 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is a second reading. So LCSC is requesting an amendment to Board Policy 5T for a permanent increase in LCSC's allowable athletic fee waivers from $110 to $160 per semester. The proposed change supports the addition of two sports, which we're excited about, dance and cheer. And so I don't know if there are any questions. Is Chris here? Oh, there's Chris, sorry. Chris, I don't know if there's anything you want to come up and speak to or if there are any questions on this one, but I think we're pretty straightforward. Patrick, anything you want to add? I don't think there's anything from the committee. We're excited about this, so.
Any questions from the board on this?
No. Okay. We'll save you a trip, Chris.
Go to motion.
And I'll go to motion. Okay. I move to approve the second reading of the proposed amendment to Board Policy 5T Fee Waivers as presented in Attachment 1.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and Callie second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Bill?
The next item on the agenda is a request for design phase authorization from the University of Idaho for tennis center restoration project. I'm assuming, Kim, you'll come forward on this, and Brian, I don't know if you'll come up as well. So U of I is requesting authorization to proceed with a $770,100 design phase of the tennis courts improvement project on the Moscow campus. And I'll let, Kim, are you going to lead us in this or is it Brian?
I can.
Okay. I'll let you kick us off.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the board. This request is for authorization to proceed with planning, programming and design phases for a project renovating our tennis courts on the west side of the PE building. Our six outdoor tennis courts are no longer viable for varsity competition because of subsurface water damage. Our tennis team currently travels 40 miles to Lewiston to host matches here on the LC State campus. We are grateful for the use of their courts, but this creates barriers for the students and fans. This project ties directly to the long-range campus development plan and the athletic facilities plan. A new vandal tennis center remains our long-term vision, but this near-term renovation addresses our immediate needs for safe, functional courts on our campus. Renovations will include subsurface drainage to resolve water issues, a new paving base, high-performance court surfacing, fencing, wind screens, lighting and exploration of an open air canopy to extend seasonal use. The athletics department has secured sufficient gift funding to advance to the design phase of this project, and we are requesting authorization for $770,100 to cover the estimated A and E fees and owner costs such as geotechnical and site surveys, stormwater services, materials testing and plan fees. These improvements will restore varsity level play to campus, enhance recreational and intramural opportunities for all students and demonstrate progress in our broader athletics facilities plan. We stand ready for any questions you have at this time.
Questions? Let me say at the beginning, if you've been on and around those courts, you understand how difficult this project is and why it requires the design that it takes. This is a non-trivial project in many ways that's long overdue. Questions? No? If not, I will go to motion. I move to approve the request by the University of Idaho to implement the planning, programming and design phases of a capital project for the University of Idaho tennis courts improvements in the amount of $770,100.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion of the motion? Remind me, are we, I mean, there's a bigger project here, obviously, after the A and E phase. Is it the expectation this is going to be completed with all philanthropy or is there institution?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent philanthropy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Probably should have known that. Oh, we have a motion to second, so any further discussion other than my questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Gilbert?
The next one is one that I know we are all excited about, and probably Jen in particular excited as anybody, but as everybody knows, the Idaho Division of Career Technical Education has been without a permanent administrator since November of 2024, and with our executive director serving in the role to maintain operations, and she has a lot of jobs. So following a review of candidates, board's staff recommends the appointment of Peter Reese. Peter, thank you for coming up and joining us. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
As the IDCTE Administrator effective September 29th, 2025. Many of you know Peter. We know the extensive experience that he, leadership excellence that he comes with. You know, he brings extensive leadership experience in higher education, workforce development and technical training with prior roles at Boise State University and the University of Alaska. His background demonstrates strong capacity to build partnerships across education, government and industry to advance Idaho workforce and post-secondary attainment goals. That's the stuff that's written. Any of you that have actually been in a meeting with him knows that he's actually one of, what I appreciate about him is he's insightful. He gets right at the thing. He knows what the thing is in a meeting and can move that along. That's one of the things I appreciate more than anything else. And so we're, we're excited for you to step into this. Additionally, board staff reprimand, recommends the designation of Adrian San Miguel and Ms. Tia Davis as assistants at the Idaho Division of Career Technical Education. Jen, I don't know if you want to add any comments?
Yes, I'm just, I'm so honored that Pete has agreed to step into this role. Board policy gives me the authority to bring recommendations to you all, and when I saw this position was open, there was only one person who came to mind, who I thought was primed for the moment and prepared to help lead CTE into kind of the next stage of its, of its existence. And in partnership with Osby, you're going to see a lot more partnership between CTE and Osby and, and kind of treatment of CTE with the legitimacy that it deserves on our campuses and, and within the board office. And so I'm, I'm excited to have his, his partnership there. I also would be remiss if I didn't take this moment to thank Tia Davis, who stepped in to assist as interim administrator while we were waiting to recruit Pete over to this position. She was chief of staff at CTE and has just been an exceptional leader. She demonstrated fortitude and vision and during a time that CTE really needed it. I see her on the screen, and so just wanted to thank you so much, Tia. I'm, I'm excited that she's going to be stepping into an assistant administrator role in partnership with Pete. Also really excited that we continue to hold on to Adrian San Miguel somehow. He's been with CTE for some time and is just an exceptional program leader. He is the heart of CTE and the programs that it represents, and we are so lucky to have someone of that caliber as well. I, I just, I'm, I'm grateful for the quality of the two assistant administrators, which the statute requires us to comply with, and I'm really excited that we're going to be in compliance with the statute as well. So the lawyer in me is super pumped about all of these things. So just wanted to, you know, Tia and Adrian are on the screen, and they have served CTE tirelessly through a lot of transition, and I'm, I'm grateful for their continued leadership. Pete, I don't know if.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you. Look forward to working with you on this. And again, Tia and Adrian have been fantastic just in the short time that I've been with the division already. Clearly, they are the heart of both of their sides of the house, and we are going to do great things, and I look forward to working with all of you on that.
Well, this is a big job because career technical education is one area, there may be more, but this is the one that comes to the top of my mind, where everybody involved in education is aligned around how important this is, from the governor to the superintendent to the legislature to this state board, we all are aligned on how important career technical education is and creating pathways for our students that align with industry needs. So we look forward to working with you and seeing you accomplish great things for us. So thank you.
That's a dynamic trio. I think the state's getting real bargain.
I agree. And so this is your last chance before I go to motion to.
Wrong. He has no, he's done.
We were treated to a pretty spectacular lunch today by the Callie folks, and that makes me look forward to working with CTE even more.
Great. Well, I'm going to move to motion then.
Please.
I, I move to appoint Pete Reese as administrator of the Idaho Division of Career Technical Education at a rate of 78 dot 99 an hour with a start date of September 29th, 2025. And I move to approve the designation of Adrian San Miguel and Tia Davis as assistant administrators at the Idaho Division of Career Technical Education.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. We have a motion to second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All of you.
And that concludes the bar agenda.
Mr. Gilbert has a lot of skills, and one of his great ones is keeping us on schedule. So thanks for catching us up. All right, I'm going to turn the agenda over to our superintendent. Sorry you can't be with us, Debbie, but thanks for joining us, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, and I appreciate the flexibility of, of doing it over Zoom. I've got three items that I want to update the board on, and then an action item for a vote. I, I thought it would be appropriate, given everything that is on the federal landscape, to update everybody in two regards. As you will recall, several months ago, I, I came to the board with the intent of wanting to utilize the, the flexibility conversation at the federal level and not just around changes at the US Department of Education, but in an active push for states to take a look at things that were limiting their student outcomes on the federal side, whether it was reporting or, or just doing business better. And we're, we're on track to bring some ideas or recommendations, is probably a better word, to the board at the December meeting. Again, as you'll recall or hope you'll remember, we talked about applying for the Ed Flex that's available that allows states to exempt LEAs in some form out of reporting and some other things that, that may cause unnecessary burdens or work that, that hinder the outcomes that we're trying to get. We're also looking at recommendations, again, around reading with the IRI compared to the ISAT, duplicative reporting and accountability and assessment. And we're, we're exploring more flexibility. Part of the process involved in, in submitting any type of change or waiver to our federal plan is that there is public comment, and, and we don't want to be shy on that. And so the, the plan is to go through the required public comment period prior to the recommendations coming to the board, have the board have a full discussion, see where the, the official public comment as far as what the federal government requires, what that looks like. But then we'd like to use the time after the board has its discussion to go back again out into the public and, and share where the board is with the, the plan of, of submitting that final document in the spring. While we are doing this work, we have also been working with a, a group that comes in to the state and will go through state processes related to federal reporting and look at ways that we are duplicating or redundant, or we have one piece of information that we make district and charter leaders fill out in five different forms. And one of the things that, that we've been very conscious of is ensuring that when we ask for something, it is something that we truly need and use and is, is important information and that we're not just gathering it for the, information for the sake of gathering information. Or worse yet, asking our districts to give us information that we first had and gave them and then ask them to give it back. That, that makes zero sense to, to anyone. Just yesterday, we received the, the final report, and we are reviewing that right now. And I will bring those, well, first of all, we can share the recommendations with the, the board from this group prior to the December meeting, but it's the intent to, to bring a, a full package, I guess, of, of where we'd like to go. One of the talking points that I've had with our local leaders for the past several months is our goal of not requiring anything that the state or the federal government does not require. We, we really want to, to make any reporting meaningful, and not every report maybe is meaningful at the same priority level as another one, but we certainly want to back off of paperwork or reporting that's just been layered on after 25 years. You, you get different people in, and somebody is, something is highly important in the moment to one person, that person leaves, and we say, why are we still doing this? And, and so I expect to see some improvements in, in that way. The first public comment period will take place in November, and we will be conducting additional outreach during that time as, as we, we truly do want to engage Idahoans at every level, from parents to teachers, to policymakers, legislators, board members, and, and anyone and everyone. The plan then for the, the December state board meeting will be to present the recommendations, have a full conversation at that time, draft documents in preparation of that type of submittal. I understand as of two hours ago that the function at the federal government related to the Department of Ed that goes through the consolidated plans, that, that, that part of the office is still in operation. And, and so as of today, I don't anticipate that we will be faced with any unnecessary slowdowns. There are some commitments on the federal level. Once state submits its, its plan, the federal government has so many days to review it and get you an answer back, even if the answer is, hey, we need more information. And, and so it's encouraging to know that we're, we were not going to go to this work and then have it sort of sit in space while we wait to see what happens. Again, as of just several hours ago, when I got a, an update around where we are on the federal landscape, I was told that indeed that, that function is, is still in process. I did want to spend just a couple of minutes talking about the federal shutdown, what that looks like for education. I'm going to stick to the K-12 arena. I know that there are some differences and variances for post-secondary, and so I won't speak to all of education in that sense, but I limit what I know to the K-12 arena. Similar to a couple of years ago, the federal government deemed education, specifically K-12, as an essential service. And, and so we are able to still access the. And so we are able to still access the dollars that have been allocated to keep special education and the other title programs functioning. You're aware of the cutbacks and the layoffs that happened at the Department of Education last Friday, and we have not experienced a disruption on, at the state level in accessing the dollars because of that. Our families, our local leaders do not call Washington, D.C. for their day-to-day operational help or guidance or what their needs are. Those calls are still coming to our office. For us, we're handling those. If we have a question, we're going to make a decision. I am taking this as a signal as to what was expected and anticipated, that states will have that oversight position. And there may be things that we're unsure of that may or may not get answered right now, but it's our goal and intent that we don't slow down the business happening at our local districts and charters while things are sorted through at the federal level. As of this afternoon, a couple of states sued the federal government to restore those education positions at the U.S. Department of Education that were laid off. My understanding is that a judge did put an injunction on those layoffs and those cutbacks. However, that doesn't necessarily mean those individuals are restored immediately to their job. If some of those individuals were on furlough, it restores them to a furlough. So it may not mean that somebody is now back at their desk answering phone calls. And as I mentioned, this was, this is just a few hours old in the news and the updates. And so we'll, we are going to operate as we have, field the calls, help all, help our local districts, we've, and charters, we've communicated with them, that changes at the federal government will not impact their ability to draw down from the dollars at the federal level. What we know is, and this is, will be a reminder for some, that the U.S. House did pass a concurrent resolution September 30 to keep government functioning. It did not pass at the Senate level. The House is on recess. And so we don't know any more than we did yesterday when those changes will come, but knowing that the dollars are still available. So Congress had appropriated the dollars specifically around special education and some of those other title programs, even though there may not be workers on the other side at the department, those dollars can be accessed and put through. One of the areas of concern was around the U.S. Department of Edu, or excuse me, U.S. Department of Ag. They fund our school nutrition or our school lunch and breakfast programs. The funding mechanism looks a little bit different. We've been told that the funding will be there through the end of December. We're certainly hopeful that the shutdown and the negotiations to restore some of that certainty will have worked its way through by December. We don't want to initiate any panic at the local level. We have the dollars to continue. I want to look at a couple other notes. One of the other significant changes, and I'll be working with our new director Reese on this, the Perkins dollars, which are the CTE dollars that flow to the state, have now been added to the U.S. Department of Labor. They are no longer funneled through the Department of Education. And the dollars are there. We just want to make sure that the right people are talking to the right people at our state level, and that we don't get hung up because a new agency is now overseeing the distribution of that money, that there's any type of slowdown. And so like I say, I'll be talking with our new director to make sure he has what he needs in his office from us, and that everyone's communicating in the right ways. Let me see here, I'm just kind of looking through the notes. Something that we've been sharing widely is that the shutdown, oh, and by the way, the change of the Perkins dollars to labor over education is not related to the shutdown. Rather, it's related to the dismantling or the removal of the Department, the U.S. Department of Ed. We've been sharing that although changes are coming at the Department of Education, that does not take away from the congressional acts that are in place and our duty to support students at every level, whether it is the federal laws around equal and fair education, special education, Title IX, some of those other places where there are congressional acts. The law is still binding, and our students are still entitled to those protections and education, which is why it was critical that we were able to draw down those grand dollars still, and then as things shut down, education dollars remained intact at the federal level. Let me see on that. This next year is one of the NAEP testing years, the National Report Card, as many of you are familiar with it. And we understand that that is an area of the U.S. Department of Ed that is also still functioning. So we haven't heard anything as of today to indicate that the schools that have been selected to test in NAEP, that that will be delayed, changed, put off, et cetera. So we'll continue to monitor that. And I wanted to use that as an opportunity to plug where we were the last NAEP testing in 2024. The way the data is compiled and shared out can be complex. And so what I say to you and what I remind you of where Idaho was and is currently with that status is, the wording that was given to me by our federal counterparts in NAEP, it is possible for states to statistically be at the same place and yet not have a specific ranking because of how they do that. And so when I share to you that for fourth grade reading, statistically, only four states, I've got to look at my notes, only four states performed better than Idaho, it is a true statement to say that we are above the pack, but that doesn't mean we're fifth in the country, because there can be other states that statistically are close to us, and only four that are above us. And I say that to put it in context, not to diminish where we are, because that is important and that's impressive. And I share that when we look at the national snapshot, that is where you will find Idaho ranked nationally. And for fourth grade math, statistically, only three states performed better than Idaho. And we look at, again, at that snapshot and say that our fourth graders are performing above national averages, and we're trending upward at a faster rate than other states. That is reflected in our IRI scores. This last year, when we tested our IRI or administered the IRI for spring of 2025, we are at a 71% statewide average, which is 11% higher than it was the year before. I am excited as our students take the IRI, which they're doing right now here in the fall, to see where we've grown again, and then what our NAEP scores look like. As we continue to build up that foundation in our early readers, naturally, we should see gains across the board. We know that we've got work to do in this area related to math, but I want to share and remind everyone where we sit nationally with NAEP. For eighth grade reading, statistically, only two states performed better than Idaho. And for eighth grade in math, only two states statistically performed better in math as well, and Idaho was six points above the national average. And so our eighth graders continue to perform and see good gains over their academic career. And I think that's something that we can tout. It has been a strategic priority of this board for many years, getting back to the basics with reading and math. And the investments that we've made, the focus that we've had, we're seeing those results over the last couple of years. And so I share that with you as fellow board members, because we've been in this together shoulder to shoulder and talking about it consistently. I think as far as the federal landscape is concerned, unless there are questions, that's really the high level of where we are. Yes, there are a lot of unknowns, but I hope the takeaway for you and for others that are listening is that we're continuing to support our students. That level of service has not changed. Our level of commitment to support our LEAs has not changed, and we'll continue to monitor the federal landscape as it develops. Any questions or comments related to that, Mr. President?
Yes, thank you, Superintendent David.
Debbie, when do you expect we'll have the results for the next round of IRI?
We will have the fall, I've got to think about this, I know Greg's in the room, but we will have the fall results here within the next month. And then we don't take the spring until, I mean, the spring until May, April, May. So as soon as we see where we are, typically, we go back a little bit in the fall from the spring because of the summer slide. But we are also really focused on how we're preparing and training our teachers. And so I'm hopeful that some of those things that we've had in place, the coaching, the phonics, and all of those, that we'll see some great results. That was a longer answer than what you were looking for.
No, that's great, but I assume you'll compare fall to fall and spring to spring.
Yes, yes.
And just as a reminder, the board, that the testing window...
Can you introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Greg Wilson, the Chief of Staff at the State Department of Education.
Thank you.
President Leibig, Member Turnbull, yeah, the testing window for the Idaho Reading Indicator, the fall, was pushed about six weeks ahead, so we will be having those scores a little bit later than usual, but in the next month or so.
Thank you. Available for the December meeting, though?
Correct.
Yeah. How wide, I know the superintendent, one of the initiatives you've been pushing is to move back to the science of reading. How, do you have a sense for how widespread that is among all of our LEAs now, and how much work is left to do there from your perspective?
We don't have a precise data point on that, but I ask, and we're constantly monitoring that. And so for those that aren't quite there, well, I don't even want to say that. I would be surprised if we don't have everybody there in some form, even if it's a supplementary curriculum that they've brought in in some form. It just, phonics has become the thing, and I absolutely love that. And I use that word to capture all the science of reading, which is balanced literacy. It is working. I got a note in the mail from a teacher that I do not know, thanking the conversation, the public attention around literacy, around phonics, around getting coaching, around smart coaching. And it was a teacher saying, I've been involved in education for so many years, and to have this so widely available and talked about, it gave her inspiration and encouragement in what she was doing. And that was out of the blue, it was not solicited. And I hear that repeatedly when I'm in schools all over. Any teacher who has had this training, they absolutely love it. And this last year, the legislature appropriated $5 million so that we could get coaches everywhere, and we're kicking that off this fall. And we're excited to bring back some results. And we're seeing the gains, we're seeing, the data is showing this works.
Other questions for the superintendent? Debbie, was there anything else you wanted to?
Yes.
The NAEP, the, I appreciate you covering the interpretation of a NAEP. I guess I would encourage board, as Debbie said, it's pretty complicated in terms of how you communicate your results. And I would encourage board members, if they have questions about, to go spend some time with Greg and go to the State Department to get more...
The NAEP is the best snapshot you're going to get statewide. ISAT, the NAEP is the guideline that we have to move by, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I'm most interested in where we are and then the progress from there.
Right. Yeah, growth.
I mean, we always want to benchmark against other states, but we've got to benchmark against ourselves and move on from there.
And remind me, is every two years, superintendent, is that right, that they do this?
Yeah, so we'll have another round in 2026, it'll be in the spring of 2026. And so to your point, David, about, you know, where we're growing in NAEP, we're going to have an opportunity to see that. Our current state assessments are showing growth. And I don't want to count the chickens before they hatch, but we're optimistic in what we've put into place that we'll continue to see growth in fourth and eighth grade.
Great, thank you.
I wanted to, yeah, two quick other items related to just sharing out. I appreciate, and I'm sorry I didn't get the gentleman's name that was on the faculty for LC referencing AI and where students drop in into this piece of technology. I want to say that this has been a priority conversation for us at the department, along with our other K-12 stakeholders. AI is being incorporated into all sorts of components that are delivering education, our assessments as an example. Our assessments have long been adaptive. That's AI. I think we're talking about AI as a new development in some regard, but it has been a part of many things that we do in the educational landscape. And clearly, it's a part of our household use. It's Alexa, it's Siri on our phone, it's, you know, all of, it's the algorithms on our social media. And so as we see it more prolific, I think we are more focused on how we talk about it, and not as a thing that happens over here, but how is it integrated in what we do. And like I say, we're, all assessments, we've been using AI for many years. There aren't any test vendors across the country that either aren't or haven't been using AI to this point. And there's a legislative group led out by Senator Kevin Cook that's been meeting to understand how we use AI, just generally speaking, whether it's the workforce, the private sector, et cetera. We've been looped into that as we're talking about it in education. We're developing professional development that our teachers that we can put out, which we're also leveraging what's happening in the university sector. We've got a lot of good partners there that we want to put out to our teachers. We don't want them to look at it as a thing that our students shouldn't use, but how do we responsibly use that? We know our students, or we believe our students will be using it in their writing. Well, let's teach them how to properly cite that, like we would any other source. And I just share that as one example of how we're looking at it. The other way that we're looking at AI at the Department of Ed and then across the board for our schools and charters, how to use it for efficiencies within office functions. And so we are, we want to have some initiatives and see them as tools that can take, help support some of the things that are just office functions. And we believe that this is important information for our students, and as digital literacy comes online as a graduation requirement, it'll factor pretty heavily in that. And we're happy to, you know, keep sharing on that. I think that was the only other note that I had as far as just timely updates. Any questions specifically on that one?
How are districts, you brought up AI, and obviously, there's a pretty significant professional development requirement in each of our school districts to make sure our educators are versed in the opportunity and the challenges with it. I mean, is that happening, or, I mean, how are... mean, how are districts dealing with this?
One by one. It looks different everywhere. I talk to teachers who say, AI has saved me hours on lesson plans. And it's not a thing where a teacher just outsources their thinking, but it becomes almost like a teacher's aide in that sense. Some are using it across the board, some don't know what to do with it but want to, some integrate it into their classrooms, some say no way. We would like to have some consistency around the state, and view it as a tool where and when appropriate. And we think that, as leaders at this level, that, you know, that responsibility looks to us to help kind of set the pace on that.
Great. Other questions for the Superintendent?
Kurt, I just agree with you. I think this thing is coming down the tracks at a speed that we can't imagine. And we need to make sure we get ahead of it and have a statewide effort.
You're not going to.
How does that look to you? I mean, is it resources from the-
I think we need to workshop that.
Yeah, the solution isn't clear to me. I mean, I agree it's coming down the tracks, but I, the solution isn't, sitting here, isn't clear to me. So I think it's something we need to think about.
The interesting part of this discussion is it's happening in real time, and it's one of those things where we want to be comfortable and say, well, let's wait until we understand it. Then, we will put out some ideas and recommendations. The problem is, it's moving faster than us. And so we don't have the luxury of waiting until we understand it all. And so that also creates the challenge of how do we do this? And it probably does look different at the post-secondary end than it does in the K-12 arena. And perhaps there's some room for us to bring all of our things together and decide as a board, hey, here are some ways that we believe are best practices for handling it. And I'm certainly up for that discussion.
But there have been transformative, I remember when I was in school, everybody thought, well, because we now have spell check on Word, then nobody knew how to spell, you know, those were the examples. Now, this is that on steroids.
This is fundamentally different. And the idea that we're going to get ahead of it is, it's not going to happen. And if you think that you're ever going to get ahead of it, then you don't, fundamentally don't understand it. And the reality is, the only way to deal with it is to embrace it, and to create sandboxes at the local level, and allow the professionals, the teachers, and the building leaders, and then the districts themselves, to use the sandboxes, just like every corporation is doing right now. You know, like, if you try and restrict it, you're going to fail. If you, if you think you're going to be able to lock it up, you're going to fail, just like in corporate. Like, you know, we've opened it up, you know, in our business, as a sandbox for every one of our employees. We have multiple agents on every employee's desk, and they're inventing with it. And that's, you know, in a sandbox environment. We've got to do the same thing in education. Because otherwise, then it just doesn't work otherwise. And so I think, you know, I had a long conversation a couple of weeks ago with a building principal in Boise, and there are evidence of teachers and principals doing that on their own, and Debbie referenced it. I think we have to, I think the answer is, we have to encourage that. Yeah, you can put some broad guardrails around it, but the idea that we're going to control it is a fool's errand at this point.
I totally agree with that.
I-
My point is, it's going to fundamentally change-
It already has.
-education. And we don't, in a certain respect, yeah, we're going to be in a reactionary mode, but we can't be in such a reactionary mode that we aren't embracing it, that we aren't using it as the tool that it can be.
The only thing you can, the only thing we can do is proactive, that is proactive, is actually embrace it.
Yeah.
And multiple agents, multiple ways of kind of thinking about it, implementations, experimentation, you know, the toolset's totally changed. And I think that's why, like, I actually don't think a statewide approach is going to make any sense, because the rate of change is not only going to be, it's going to be different, frankly, district by district, where you meet, where you meet those kids. The rate of change in an urban area, almost by definition, is going to be different than the rate of change in a rural area. It's coming to both, but it's going to come at different speeds. And that LEA is going to be in a much better position to, again, if you empower the people in the buildings, if you empower the people at the districts to experiment with it, they're going to be much better positioned to understand where it's coming from in their district and sort of stay with it. I think you have some broad guidelines as a state, but I mean, it's going to be different.
I get where you're coming from, but in our company, right, it's here. It's in your company, right?
Yep.
But if we're doing it on our own, and we're not collaborating, and we're not bringing in the best expertise outside, we're going to fail.
Absolutely.
So we have to have some form of collaboration, some idea sharing, you know, so I agree with your point.
Well, the whole state of professional development's going to change. The way we do professional development's going to absolutely change. The opportunity for professional development, for exactly that point, right? The ability to share. One of the things, when we did the task force a few years ago, was the difficulty in sharing best practices from a PD perspective, right? That was actually a barrier. Well, it's not a barrier now, right? I mean, if you are doing things in the classroom that fundamentally are transformational or are different, the ability to share that is markedly and different, the entire thing, than it was five years ago, three years ago, to your point. Like, collaboration's actually easier.
But, yeah, from a statewide perspective, the districts that have better resources are going to, they're going to be there, and they need to help the under-resourced districts come along.
Yep.
That's kind of my point.
Yeah.
President Leibig, if I may, I mean, one of the things that we're going to need to be very sensitive to in partnership with our legislative partners is ensuring that as we're putting parameters around what our schools are doing, is that we are prioritizing the protection of student data, and how that is used, if at all. I know that that is a primary concern that I've heard raised numerous times, and something that we do need to make sure that we have kind of statewide guidance around. And I am also sensitive to the financial investment piece, right? Because our, you know, we are struggling with our budgets across our institutions. I agree that collaboration is really important. And so how can we both use it to streamline those processes, to improve kind of the financial position of our institutions, but also ensure that we have, that we're not putting our schools in a position of kind of being out on their own with their independent budgets? So, because you could see the exponential increase to the state where we have kind of that disintegrated approach. So I think we do need to spend more time on this. And I know from a board office perspective, in partnership with my IT team, we will be certainly focused on how do we adequately protect student data in partnership with SDE as we pursue these types of initiatives.
Yeah. To Bill's point, I think the proper use of it will actually improve efficiency and allocation.
It's going to completely change the cost structure. For, think about the issue for our smaller districts as it relates to any kind of SAS application seat licenses. This is going to eat that for breakfast, right? It's going to change fundamentally the cost, you know, so like, to your point. Like, yeah, absolutely, we've got to be as protective as we can be of student data. That makes a ton of sense. But the reality is, from a budgetary standpoint, it's not like technological changes in the past where it's like, okay, now we have to go out and do this great, you know, even the small districts have to buy this huge enterprise system, right, that they can't afford. This is the democratization of that, kind of on steroids.
So I like the idea of encouraging multiple sandbox all over, and not standing in the way of that. So then, with that approach, maybe the role of the department, or even the board, is to be the collaborative force that-
I like that.
-when you see something working here, it's how do you replicate that quickly?
Yeah, Kurt, that was what I was going to bring up, was the sandbox approach. And Debbie mentioned a couple of things, you know, just sharing that we are all, and some of the universities have already, and four-year institutions have already done that, how they're being more efficient, and sharing those ideas. And Debbie talked about the coaching. Well, you know, I mean, you could potentially have one coach, you know, an AI coach, that could interact, and think about the money that would save.
Well, just, I mean, if you're talking about school budgets from an administrative standpoint, your company, my company, we're not hiring additional analysts, right? Nope, we can do two, three, four times as much work with the same number of analysts.
Fundamental due diligence in our businesses, they're not, yeah, exactly, we're not hiring those anymore. It's, they've become the editors of information, not the creators of. Yeah, like you said, it's going to change that. Absolutely, David, you're absolutely right. And that's why, like, encouraging those that are closest to the students to be experimenting with this. If I was, you know, look, you know, it's from the cheap seats, but if I was a building leader at this point, or if I was in Pete's former role, or something like that, I would be encouraging all of my teachers to be, in their own time, using multiple agents, and experimenting and doing like, like, all of them. And frankly, if there was a reluctance, one of the ways I would be evaluating my people at this point, if there was a fundamental, like, I'm, you know, I'm not going to do it, that's a pretty important data point.
Yeah. Okay. Well, maybe we carve out some agenda time on a future agenda where we have more time to dive in here. Superintendent, what else do you have?
I'll go to motion. I just want to close that out by saying I appreciate the discussion. And I'm, my, our work is reflected in all of those things. The protection part, that we, here it is part, we can't control it, but our K-12 folks are looking to us, saying, hey, show us how, how does this work? And so I think we've got a real opportunity to help in all those ways. So I'll leave it there. The one action item for the board that I have today is to approve the removal of a test question item. Pete will remember these days well. Many years ago, there was a group that was instituted, it's the Bias and Sensitivity Committee. It's a group of 30 individuals that get together, parents, teachers, and look through test questions to ensure that the questions being asked of our students are appropriate. And the way that the items are reviewed, it takes place annually. We've had some years where, when I first came on the board 100 years ago, there were 30 questions that were flagged to be removed by the board. And some years, we have none. It doesn't come up at all. And so I share that as context for our new board members. If you're saying, hey, we've never seen this before, it's likely that nothing was flagged during the review process in a prior year. This year, there is one item that was reviewed. I think you've all been, it's been explained why we won't be saying what that is. This is a property right of the test vendor. So as board members, we can look at it, but we don't share that, because this question will be in a test bank that other states and other places will be using, that they may be fine with. And so the question, I can go through the process, but I think it's covered very well in the board materials.
I'd go to motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Go ahead, why don't you state the motion, but then, you've already got a second, so you're thinking.
I move to approve the removal of the one flagged item from the 2025-26 Assessment Item Review Committee.
We have a motion, and it's still a second. Any discussion of the motion?
I will say, Jen, is this an area where we can add, we add no value to this discussion, right? Is this an area where we can delegate to what the experts who are making this determination?
I think we certainly, I think this is part of one of those areas where we are certainly exploring kind of the right responsibility and role of the board in oversight of K through 12, and also the delegation of appropriate authority to the superintendents. So this is certainly something that we can work through together, to the extent that we are able to. And I can't say off the top of my head if this is one that we can touch or we can't. So I'm looking at, well, I'm looking at Greg's.
Or even if we can't to-
Consent.
Even if we can't to our staff.
Yes.
To you guys.
Yep, happy to help.
I don't want to speak for the board, but I'll try, and someone can correct me. I know the fellow board members enough to know that if we're being asked to approve something where we can add no value to it, I think we'd all be open to delegating that to either staff or to the superintendent. Delegate appropriately.
Yep.
To where the-
That's consistent with the work that we're doing around the board to make these meetings kind of more meaningful for everyone involved. And so the board can have appropriate attention to the issues that matter for the state.
Cool.
It is the board's choice to approve the recommendation or deny it. Obviously, our board has in the past supported the recommendations coming from the committee. I don't see that changing. And if that is the goal, it does make sense to offload some of that, you know, maybe in a different place. But anyway.
Okay. Well, we have a motion in a second, so we need to formally vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
That concludes the agenda.
Thank you. Well, we'll miss you at the reception, Cindy and Debbie, but I'm sure it's going to be lovely, because it always is here, LC. But we'll see you tomorrow morning at, we're going to begin at 9:00 AM tomorrow, which is 10:00 AM Mountain. So we'll see you then. Just a few logistical items. The agenda planning was remarkable, because we're, I'm giving everybody back two minutes from the scheduled agenda.
Thank you, Scott Greco. Thank you, Scott.
Yeah. We do have a reception tonight at 5:00 at the Center for Arts and History, which is at 4:15 Main Street. You should have that material.
Is that where it was last time?
I think that's where it was last year as well, wasn't it?
Okay.
Yeah. As I said, we're going to adjourn the meeting for the evening, where breakfast will be served here tomorrow between 7:00 and 8:30. And we'll begin the meeting promptly at 9:00. Dr. Pemberton was kind enough to offer, for those who are interested, a tour of the Schweitzer Center after our meeting tomorrow, which is on the way to the airport. So I have accepted on behalf of those that are traveling to get a quick tour of the Schweitzer Center. I think you'd find it really interesting, David. Pete, I don't know if you've seen it.
As long as we keep on schedule.
Yeah, we'll keep on schedule. And-
No bathroom.
So my question is, is anybody who is traveling on their own wanted, they need a number count. Sean, Cali, you've seen it?
I've seen it.
I've been there.
Okay, all right. So just the-
On the plane.
Pete, Jen, we'll get you the final number. I just need to confirm whether Sean and, okay, you got it? Any, what did I miss?
That's great.
That's good. Okay, so we're going to adjourn for the evening. Look forward to the receptions tonight. Thanks, everybody. Good night.